Mr. Mayor, all present with the exception of Council President Bacon, who is an excused absence tonight.
Thank you. With a review of the agenda, is there anything on the consent calendar? That's gonna cost ya. We will have a recess while you dig in for a five-dollar bill on that one. One dollar. Councilor McKinney, would you pass in the pick? Is that yours? Sounding off over there? That's still his? Now, back to the issues of the City Council. Anything on the consent calendar? I have one, and it's just a scribbler's. If you'll notice, if I may, Sue. If you notice on... Oh, I gotta find it here. Consent calendar is under eight. On council minutes for the meeting on April 2nd, for the council meeting itself, you have Mr. McKinney noted twice.
Because he's doubly special. But I will strike it. Sorry about that.
On your minutes for April 16, 2018, again, Mr. McKinney is recognized as being here twice. I don't know what this is costing him, but... You think you did? Okay.
I shall fix the error.
Anything else on the consent calendar? Any other agenda items? Anything for council business? I have two items. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Patrick.
Oh, no problem, it's for council business, so...
Just getting there. Council business. I have two items. One dealing with regional meetings and another dealing with a motion that'll be made later. Patrick, you?
Yeah, I wanted to bring a motion about water hardships and having staff bring us information about the historical and current consequences to Newburgh residents of allowing water hardships.
And I'm going to look to the City Manager to do a little coordinating on that particular issue before something comes to me. Anything else for council business? All right, we will proceed then to the items for our work session, and that is to do a review and an update of our council priorities. City Manager?
So, Mayor and Council, Johan, you're City Manager. So hopefully, you've had a chance to look in your packet and read all of the updates. To make it easier for you in your packet, these are the items that are highlighted, so you don't have to look at every item over what the changes are. So there's a few where I'd really... What I'd like to do for you is to bring the...
Clarification, if I may.
Sorry.
Highlighted would be what we see with gray tone?
It looks in red.
In red?
Yeah, so if you look at on your granite case, it shows up in red.
Well, I'm looking at what was given to me as a printout, and it doesn't show up red on anything.
The mayor's alluding to the yellow portions, like 1-1.
Here, Mayor. You can have mine. On yours, it shows up in the deep black. That's the changes, okay?
All right, that's all I need to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is start with the very first goal, which is about 911 dispatch and radio, and ask the chief and Mary Newell to come up and brief you the changes.
Go ahead, Chief.
Mayor and Council, Brian Casey, Newburgh Dunder Chief of Police. The first thing I want to do is just tell you that I want to give credit where credit's due on these projects. And that's with Mary Newell. The person sitting next to me, obviously. She's carried the water on the bulk of these projects and done the majority of the work. And it's been a daunting task to get through all this stuff. So I just wanted to take a minute and publicly commend her for her work. You know, a lot of times we get through these projects, and as you can see, my name's on there, but I'm not actually the one doing all the work. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I'm gonna give you the honor of helping go over some of this stuff. But we can do it together. But honestly, Mary is in leading charge on this stuff. So if you want to just kind of start and maybe go through where we're at on these projects, that would be good.
Okay, well, thank you, Chief. That was really nice, unexpected and nice. I'm Mary Newell, I'm the Support Services Manager at the Police Department. The council goal one is to maintain a state-of-the-art 911 dispatch center and 800 megahertz radio communication system. We're working on that item. Action item, replace our dispatch furniture. We did obtain some quotes in order to do that. We have... It has been put on hold until we determine whether or not there's a budget for that. The furniture that we have in the building is... It came with the building in 1998, and so it's at the end of its life, basically. It looks pretty good, but its functionality is not so good, and it's falling apart. Implement text to 911. We've actually done that, that is completed. We still have to do our rollout for the media. That text to 911 is paid by your OEM funds, the 75 cents that you pay on your phone bill. So dispatchers are ready. If we get a 911 text, we'll be able to respond. Visionaire upgrade, again, that's our CAD. We're waiting for a budgeting decision on CAD. It's estimated in the neighborhood of $350,000. That's a standalone CAD with the capability to send call information to WACA or other neighboring agencies who have the capability to receive that data. So for instance, TVFNR comes to mind. If we take one of their calls, we can take the preliminary information, and we should be able to ship it on to them, which hopefully would give them a head start on what they're doing. But that would be once we're up and running. Replace our CAD computers, that's been done. The computers were close to five years old. They had to be replaced whether we moved forward with CAD or not. So we went ahead and took care of that. Let's see, fiber. The question on fiber has to do with whether or not we can connect to the Washington County CAD system. We haven't been able to locate fiber that's suitable for that purpose. As a backhaul or a backup, we would be able to use the radio system. There's capability there, but that's not your primary. That would only be backup for redundancy. Fiber again. The radio system is moving along. They are still in the design process, but it is coming pretty much to a head. They are working on subscriber radios. And the subscriber radios are the mobiles and the portables that the officers use in the cars and on their hips. They'll be rolling that out pretty soon. They're issuing a survey. So each agency will be able to identify what it is that they want on their radios, who they're going to talk to, whether they're going to be encrypted, not encrypted, which mutual aid channels that they're going to be using. And that information will be compiled, and as those items are... As the information comes in, that agency will be scheduled to update their existing radios and the new radios that are sitting in storage, waiting for them. The radios will be... They'll have the old information as well as the new information, so that when they flip the switch on your radio, you'll flip the switch and you'll go from analog to digital. That's the goal, hopefully in a one- or two-step process. But it also provides you the ability to flip back if it does... If there's some glitches that have to be worked out. Preliminary contract. We've signed our contract with Motorola. The tower location, we know where it's going to be. We are just about ready to submit the application on behalf of the City of Newburgh to install the tower. So that would be coming here pretty soon. Subscriber radio needs... Well, we just talked about that. Again, it goes back to creating the templates for the radios, which we may actually be the pilot, because we have radio... We have new radios, we have existing tri-band radios, and we have some of the older APX radios that'll have to be flashed to bring them up to capability to take care of digital radio. So we have everything available. That means we might be the very first ones to get that done. And then estimate costs and means to pay for this upgrade. That is out there with Matt.
Councilor McKinney, City... The mayor, anybody else? Go ahead, Councilor McKinney.
Once a tower is erected... Once the tower is erected and installed, can we lease out portions of that tower to different people to... So that they can use it and that mitigates our monthly or annual cost? Is it a revenue stream? Can it become a revenue stream?
I don't think it's likely to happen because of the chance for interference and the separation space between our equipment and, for example, cell phones. So I don't think the tower is gonna be leased out. There might be the potential of another public safety microwave or antenna on there, but I doubt it.
Like Yamhill County or something like that?
Potentially, yeah.
Relay on the...
Or OSP. You know, another... Yeah, right. I know Salem is putting in a system down there. Mutual aid. There's a lot of agreements out there where they share tower space so to expand their coverage area.
Interesting, thank you. And follow up to that, and I have a second one. Are there restrictions on the use of this tower? People getting... Renting space on the tower, are there restrictions?
Yes, there are.
It can only be used for...
The tower is probably will be owned by the city, so we would determine who could put antennas on it. And yes, that would be restricted.
Has yet to be determined.
Has yet to be determined, yeah.
We haven't done that. Second question I have. You're retiring equipment in dispatch, right? You're retiring equipment in dispatch, right?
You mean the old radios?
The old radios?
Yes, we would be.
Okay. Those are... Become surplus property, right?
That would be correct.
All right. What are we doing with the surplus property?
We haven't talked about that yet. As far as whether Motorola will take it away, there's very little value left in that equipment. It's extremely old at this point. Part of it is owned by WACA. They set up control stations. When we went on to their system, it's not our equipment. Some of it is leftover from our old system, but...
Has there been any discussion of any remuneration that has derived from this surplus be used to offset the debt?
No, not at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? None? Continue.
Thank you.
So if there's no other questions on that. Goal two, if you look at it, this is related to streets. It's really important. But if you look on there, I think there's... First, there's a number of items that have already been completed. And while I know we could talk a long time about streets, and I know it's important to councillors in particular, unless there's other questions, I'll move to the next one. And you know, and this whole conversation goes that this is an update of goals, and what we anticipate... And try to make that very regular, so you look at it, see where it's going. And I would anticipate that in the fall, with a new councillor settling and some changes, just, you know, with the mayor, with the new mayor, that after the first of the year, it's likely, and will ask, that you'll come again and do some goal setting. You might just take the same goals and just update them or ask for new things. So there's no questions about streets, about where we're at on that. Move to annexation. The annexation, you know, we had the vote. Truman is... We're getting all of the material of all of the issues related to TVFNR in this transition, whether it's equipment, where records are being stored, putting that into an IGA. And we've just been collecting it. We haven't finalized that. We're getting closer. But we'll get that material, then meet with TVFNR and make the annexation. And it's gonna occur July 1, one way or the other, meaning that even if not, everything has been resolved. Goal four has to do with the NERPs system. And you can see there, we had the big change about with the new contract of no new employees going into NERPs. Council has a subcommittee of NERPs where you look at the investment of the funds and where we're going with that. We just recently had that meeting, and I think it was reported here. So the next step is looking at those employees that still remain in NERPs. And we have some that are in the union and some that are supervisors. And we'll work overtime and meeting with them individually to see if there's some of those we can also bring into the FURS system as a cost-saving matter.
For educational purposes, if I may, the Subcommittee of the Council is on pensions in total, not just NERPs. They also review the progress and the various nuances of the FURS program also. Thank you.
So then, the next one, goal five. Later in this meet... In tonight's session, you're gonna have... IT is gonna come in and do a detailed issue of five. So I'd like to just pass that. If, when we finish everything right now, we can come back to five, but also knowing that they're in the rest of your session. Goal six has to do with the five-year financial plan and fiscal policies. You can see, we're now using it. There's... Now we go to the... I mean, we've used it for the budget. A big time is going to be in July, the second work session, where we then take that five-year plan and say, okay, we've got this gap now. What are we really gonna do as a plan? We will use that. And that will be put in place and very interactive in a session here. And I think there'll be multiple sessions over figuring out what we're gonna do in the future. In addition, there's some goals in here about some financial policies. And those have been put on the back burner while we've been working through getting the budget done in the five years. But this whole plan was a five-year strategy and three years of implementing all these things. So there's still a number of items that are on there. They're highlighted, and if you have any questions about those. The next one, just 'cause I'd like to get Doug up in front of you on a couple of items. And that's talking about the UGB. And there's... If you look through it, take a few seconds to look through. There has been a number of things, and there are things coming at you over the next, really, 18 months of UGB, including even the discussion about water hardship at the next meeting. So I'd leave this for if you have any specific questions, or Doug, if you want to add something about UGB issues.
Doug Ruck's, Community Development Director. So on the UGB front, as you know, we got the grant from DLCD. We've executed that grant with DLCD. We've been out for an RFP for consultant services. We have selected Echo Northwest to do that. We're working through the contract on that one right now. The DLCD had to put on hold the technical fixes to Division 38. They... The legislature awarded $1.73 million to DLCD to address affordable housing for housing needs assessments, and so that took a priority. So a conversation I had with them a couple of weeks ago, they were re-engaging. I'm pulling together their advisory group and talking with stakeholders. And then they'll continue to advance that forward. Our evaluation process will take 13 months to go through Phase Two. We'll start with looking at serviceability to over 10,000 acres of land at a high level, kind of a planning level. Then we'll come back and we'll do the buildable lands inventory for residential and employment lands. Then we'll have to circle back and redo the serviceability as we start to refine it down. Think of it kind of a funnel. As we get tighter and tighter, we'll do additional analysis on feasibility to provide infrastructure with that. That will then get us down to a point of saying how many acres of land we need for residential and employment, and then where those lands may be. Then the hard work starts, is the negotiations between exception lands or lands that may not be exception lands. Again, we don't know the answers to all of that yet. So Cheryl Keynes, our senior planner, is the one who's managing that project.
Questions or comments for Doug? Councilor McKinney?
Is there any of the previous work, like whether in Division 38 or any of that... Is there any useful portions of the past history related to these issues that are... That is going to be applicable or usable to you? Now, you said 10,000 acres. I can't remember right now how many acres we talked about originally in the UGB or whatever. But could you refresh us about usable information from the previous process?
Yes, Counselor. The information from the previous process, which goes back into that 2009 timeframe and that work that was led up to when the council withdrew out of mediation, we withdrew our application with DLCD, all that work goes by the wayside. Division 38 is a different model. There are elements of Phase One that we completed back in May of 2017 that will be usable. Community outreach that we did, establishing the study area, that study area analysis, lot sizes, what's developed, what are hazard lands and so forth, will all be usable. The buildable lands inventory we did in Phase One will be in part usable. Depends upon the technical fixes that DLCD does.
Follow on.
Follow on.
On the descriptions of the questionable land or unusable, have some of those issues been resolved over the past years? Or do they... Or do the same questions exist about the undevelopable or unusable lands?
Under the new administrative rule, it's very clear. So where you have landslide areas, this is information that comes from other state data sets. So I'll use landslides as an example. And we've pulled that data set from Dogami, Department of Geology and Mineral Industries. That's embedded in our data layers and our GS layers. So we know where they're at, up to the northeast, to the north, to the northwest, where they're at down along the river. So that's an example of data that we do have that will be usable in Phase Two.
Follow on.
Follow on.
The anticipated obstacles that we might face with... Is this a larger number of acres? What parties and/or issues might rail against this?
I think it'll probably, in that regards, will be similar to the previous body of work that was done from 2009 up through 2016. And that will be looking at... We first have to look at exception lands, marginal lands, and urban reserves first. That's kind of the first bucket. Then the second bucket is you look at other lands. So that's your farm and forest lands. Then you further divide that, and you look at... Class 1, 2, and 3 are the lowest in the bucket that you look at. 4, 5, and 6 are higher agricultural lands that you would look at. So there will be individuals, I'm sure, that will say you shouldn't be looking at any high-value farm land, class 1, 2, and 3 soils. So it's just the bar for us is higher. If we look at that land and we think that any of that land may be necessary to need any of our employment or residential land, the statutory requirements are higher. We have to do additional analysis in order to overcome that.
Follow on.
Follow on.
So in some of our land inventory, some of those issues have been resolved over the last several years. Is that a correct assumption or an incorrect assumption?
I would say they have not been resolved. The hope would be, as we come through this next 13-month process, we'll have clarity, more clarity on it. But you're gonna have people who are proponents and opponents of any direction of where you're gonna look if you need additional land.
Any other questions or comments at this point? Continue.
That's all I had on the UGB side.
City Manager?
Sorry, I just had a quick one. A few months ago, I was contacted by Sid Freeman, and wasn't... Schedules didn't work out. Is it appropriate for us to meet with those folks, kind of offline? Or is that not encouraged?
Counselor, the process that we'll go through is a legislative process. So you do have that ability to have those communications. But I think it would be best for everyone involved that those communications occur in front of the Citizens Advisory Committee for this project, which is advising the consultant and staff, in front of the Planning Commission, or at a council meeting under public comments. That way, everyone has the same information.
Okay, continue. Joe?
So, Mayor, that's done with that, and we'd like to move on to affordable housing. Now, again, please read these things. Again, just read the updates. Remember, there were a lot of different strategies that you directed staff to work on. Some of those are covered. And then if we could just get Doug to cover the changes of those that you prioritize right now.
Thank you. So the first one is on the annexation policies, the R3 annexations in UGB. So that's in front of you this evening for your second reading. So you've held one reading on that ordinance already. Accessory dwelling units. We have now had two work sessions with Planning Commission. We've had two work sessions with the Affordable Housing Commission. I would say that we're at 95% of what needs to be done for the body of work for that. The outstanding issues are, should you require off-street parking for accessory dwelling units? The issues about if you create 500 square feet or more of new impervious area meeting our water quality standards, and then system development charge fees. So the land use side, I think we've pretty much resolved between the two commissions. They've come in alignment, what they need to do there. That's the big portion of that. The construction excise tax is the one that's up next after the accessory dwelling units. And so I'll be putting together a work program for that one. And then the one about the missing middle housing, which is the issue of duplexes and/or triplexes on corner lots in R1. We started to do some preliminary analysis on that one. So those are two work products that will be coming forward over the course of the next, let's say, six to nine months.
Mr. Mayor?
Patrick?
I was wondering about the process, if we wanted to move some of these items around. I'm just mostly worried about budget issues and... I'm just mostly worried about budget issues and what we're going to do about our budget, and then also rolling out a construction excise tax kind of in parallel and the timing of that. What would the process be to kind of say, can we pump the brakes on one or the other and figure out timing for both of those?
Counselor, so when we brought, when this was brought forward by the Housing Newberg Group and you looked at the nine proposals and you identified four. So that was the R3 annexation, accessory dwelling units, the missing middle housing, the construction excise tax. We were already working on the R3 piece. We knew we had to work on the accessory dwelling units because of Senate Bill 1051. So we said those are the first two. But I also indicated it would be an 18- to 24-month process to get all four of the first, that first bucket. So if there was a desire by council, I think you could probably do it by motion at a meeting and say, well, maybe you hold off on this construction excise tax, but work on the missing middle housing as the next one, because you didn't prioritize those four. You just said, here are the four.
Counselor McKinney?
Doug, would you describe to us who pays the excise tax, or how is that passed on to a certain portion of the public? It's not passed on to everybody. But describe to us in late terms, the excise tax.
Counselor, the concept of that would be that there's a statutory limit if you could impose up to a maximum of 1% construction excise tax based upon the value of the building permits that are being issued.
Value of the...
Building permits.
Thank you.
So again, I have to do a bunch of research and pull other cities and look at their ordinances and enabling legislation and so forth, and I haven't done that yet. So I'm going to give you a very high level. There are, at the time, it was talked about, could you exempt affordable housing projects from having to pay the construction excise tax? That is feasible to do. We'd have to establish what affordable means, and we've talked about thresholds before of 80% of the area income level, which is $72,400 this year. So there's details like that that we'll have to drill down into with both the Affordable Housing Commission, and we'll probably take the Planning Commission as well, just like we did on the ADU. So we've got those checks and balances before it ever comes to you. So it's not, every household doesn't pay. It's if you come in and if you're building something and you're pulling building permits, then you would have to pay into the construction excise tax.
So it's reasonable to assume that the purchaser of that home or property or whatever it is, they're the ones that are really paying the excise tax. They're, they're, the developer pays the 1%, but then that's passed on to the purchasers.
More than likely, it's going to be passed on, yes.
More than likely.
I don't know the answers yet because I have not done the work.
And is that because of the, some properties might be exempt, or...
Could be. So if you had, let's say hypothetically, you had an apartment project, and that's not a good example, because there's no building permit associated with it. If you just, if I was a property owner selling my house to another party, nothing. If I was a developer building a new house and I had to pay the construction excise tax and it's the first time, again, more than likely, the developer is going to pass on that 1% into the cost of the sale of that home.
City Manager?
So Mayor and Counsel, if there's no other questions, we move. There has been some activity on the riverfront area. Again, encourage you to read all this, but this is some, a lot more current stuff.
Okay. So on the riverfront side, we finalized that statement of work with ODOT. We've got, that contract has been signed. We've engaged with our consultant, which is Angela Planning Group and their subconsultants. So we've had a kickoff meeting. We had an initial, what we called the initiation meeting, where we met for a half a day. Went over the scope of work with the consultants and with ODOT. We did a tour of the entire study area. They got to have a detailed tour of the mill site. So we walked the site. We got inside the buildings. Took us about three hours to walk through the mill itself. We are, we've done an orientation meeting. This wasn't on here because we just had it, but we had did an orientation meeting with the Citizens Advisory Committee, and their first official meeting where they'll be working with the consultant starts on May 23rd. We're working on stakeholder meetings. Those are being scheduled currently, and those will happen towards the end of this month. We're looking at the May 25th for that to occur. So we are off and running on the riverfront plan.
So without any questions there, now move to an area where there's really no money put into it, but a lot of activity has happened, and the biggest part is because of Jay and Jill Durrell, and then just a lot of different employees. So this is about our emergency preparedness. So that's goal number 10.
Good evening, Mayor Andrews, Counsel, Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So 10.1, Goal 10 is Implement Emergency Preparedness Response Program. 10.1, Organize and Train City Organizations for Emergency Response and Mitigation. We recently had nine people attend ICS 300 and 400. That is Unified Command and EOC type of work. It's typically a three-day course. So we had nine people get that. We have about 35 people that still need to complete just basic training. That's online training. That's 100, 200, 700, 800. Some counselors are also on that list, although it's not mandatory. It would be advised to pick up those certificates. When Jill and Mary Newell started the list, we had 80-plus people that needed training. So we're down to 35 now, so we're making some significant progress. Action item 10.3, Maintain the EOC in a Continuous State of Readiness. Storage areas. We have budgeted some cupboards. They're going to go back here, right where Dave's sitting there, and another countertop, and they'll be lockable so we can keep materials there 24/7, because this is the emergency operations center. There's just not enough room in the detective area or the closet there. So we'll be bringing cupboards in next fall here to take care of that item. And review, modify equipment and infrastructure to operate the EOC. About a year ago, I had a seismic study done of this building, a preliminary study, and then I followed up, showing that this building was not going to make it through a cascade, a subduction zone earthquake. We submitted for a grant to Business Oregon, the state of Oregon, and we, actually, the grant was rejected and multiple times. And we finally got the person with the state to come out here and walk around. This is a multi-use building. This isn't really considered a police operations right now. They didn't like that. So then the bathrooms weren't, and I mean, it just went, and then court's in here, and the sheriff is using a piece of the building over there, and she couldn't wrap her arms around this whole building. It ended up she came out here and we got the award for $877,000 to do a seismic upgrade to this building. We're probably a year out, maybe, from construction, something like that. So we're going to be moving forward on that. So that's really good news. Remember, though, even though we do a seismic upgrade on this building, it doesn't mean the building's still going to stand at the end of the earthquake. It just increases our odds, right? We don't know what the underlying soil is exactly here and how the waves are going to hit. I mean, the ground could crack and separate right here and divide this room in half. We don't really know. But it'll give us a much higher potential to what you call immediately occupiable. It shakes, you cover. After the shaking, you're able to get back to what you're doing, you know, to try to maintain the community. That ICS 300, 400 coursework that a bunch of people went through will allow us to operate the EOC more effectively. We're going to be doing some follow-up training with folks and make sure, hopefully, we can retain what they learned at the recent classes. It's been about a year since I took 300, 400, and a lot of that's already evaporated. So people that have certificates that are 10 years old and stuff, you know, most of that's probably gone away, so. The staffing for the EOC, as I said, the 300, 400 will help us with that. Reach out to the Yamhill County Sheriff's Office for emergency management and support. We've developed a real good relationship with the Yamhill County Emergency Management. Brian Young and I speak a lot. We've been coordinating a lot together. I just went to an all-day exercise. Mary and I went to their exercise. It was a snowfall event, mass casualty. They implemented a bunch of mass casualty plans with the hospital and such. And then the EOC was another operation. We were dealing with a bunch of power outages and people that needed water and medication supplies and that sort of thing. So it was a really good joint exercise that we just completed with the county. On 10.5, we organize and coordinate local training for public safety and volunteer first responders. So last month, city staff attended the Prepare Loud event held by Newberg Christian, and we handed out a bunch of emergency management materials. We went over the hurricane water purification system, which was really interesting. A lot of people hadn't seen that before. We're also working to put together a grab-and-go bag for our recognition breakfast coming up, and so we're going to get the physical bag for all city staff members and council, and then over time, show people what they need to be putting into it, and then help them supplement their grab-and-go bag. So at least they'll have one thing in your trunk or at your house that you can take off with, emergency supplies. And that's it for the emergency management update, unless you have something, Joe?
Chris?
Who?
Go ahead.
The churches that we're working with for this program, would this be a good opportunity to use those old surplus radios to spread them out through all the churches? Because I don't think they're going to have radios to contact EOC if we're staged here, right?
Yeah. The problem is with those older radios, they got a lot of switches and dials and bands and that sort of thing on it. And the discussion has been handheld walkie-talkies, which will give you a couple-mile range. Do something that's quite a bit simpler and not get complex. They're bulky, they're nearing into life, as Mary said. It's probably better to invest in some lower-end, you know, sets of handhelds. And we have a grant application out right now for a storage container that we can keep onsite here, a smaller one, and probably in there is where we're going to keep things like that.
City Manager?
So if there are no other questions, Goal 11 talks about the economic development strategy within two meetings as part of Doug's regular presentation like you have tonight of master plans. He's going to come back and he'll talk about that in detail. One of the things that's important about that, when you see it, there's probably 15 or 20 pages worth of almost single-item tasks that we work on monthly. And sometimes you get a report and it might be too overwhelming. At his update, he can cover that one to you. And there's actually, tonight, there's going to be discussion about the TLT program, but he can briefly get you up, then we'll still get, if there's no questions beyond that, then we'll get into visioning, which there is some substantial updates coming.
Thank you. Doug Rux again. So as City Manager indicated, we do meet on a monthly basis, so we meet 11 times a year, not 12. We take Christmas off, holiday season. But we meet every month and go through all four pillars and get an update about where we're at, and so it's time for the annual report to come out, which will occur, I believe, at your second meeting in June. Under the downtown plan, the, we gave you a report back on May 7th about the first year of activities that occurred in the downtown area. And as we continue to staff up in community development, our associate planner will take over the task of doing the implementation of the downtown plan. So you remember in the budget, that's dealing with the West End Mill District on the rezone and traffic analysis work, looking at our regulations on Second Street to encourage that mixed-use development to occur. And as we've talked about on a number of occasions, the Butler property, where we're getting ready to go out for requests for interest on that property. The tourism plan, the activities that have been occurring there is the four small grants that were awarded, so three of them are out. I'm still negotiating contract on one of those grants. The, you asked the TLT Committee to reconsider the Wolves and Peoples, so that's on your agenda this evening for reconsideration. The TLT and the Marketing Subcommittee of the TLT have spent a lot of time talking about the organizational structure and how we move forward with the TLT. You have a work session scheduled on May 21st with the TLT where they'll be presenting a packet of material to you for your consideration and discussion. That will be followed up with an official report coming back to determine if you agree with the direction they're proposing or not. That's all I have on that.
City Manager?
So if there's no questions on that one, we'll just go, the community visioning is tag-team between Doug and community engagement. But Doug had an opportunity that's described here, and you can do a little bit more about a partnership with the University of Oregon.
So we had an opportunity, I was at a training down at the U of O, and I was talking with them about their Resource Assistance for Rural Environments, RARE, program, and we were talking about council's priority to do a community visioning program. The outcome of that is that we did submit an application to the University of Oregon through the Community Services Center. Outreach to our key, what I believe are key stakeholder groups within the community, which are listed, just some of the examples are CPRD, the Cultural Center, School District, TVFNR, George Locke, and so forth, about support for doing a community visioning program. That program will be here one day during the week of May 21st, looking, having a conversation with me about the program. I've already been pulling together documents for community visioning, kind of the organizational structure, the steps that we all need to go through for that, which will lead to conversations over the course of the summer with council to make sure you have a clear understanding of how we're going to approach this, using an International Association of Public Participation II model. And so there are some choices you get to make early on about the level of community engagement you want to have, and then there's a lot of detail that will be followed up with that. So hopefully, we will get a rare participant, and they would be here for 11 months, and that would be their single task, is to do a community visioning program for this community.
City Manager?
So Mayor and Counsel, the last one of the goals, and then we'll do IT during your regular business sessions. You have plenty of time for Dave to have, you know, conversation with you. Last one is about transit, and the big part with that is that Counselor Essen is our city rep, and then myself as the staff person supporting that of a citizen advisory group, and they're now coming to the end of making a final recommendation to the county commission as to what transit should look like. And basically, what's come down for recommendations for us in the draft plan are a couple. One is that there will be four routes within the city. They will cover every one of the neighborhoods of the community, which right now, there's two areas that have not been served. So the job area of the Allison and ADEC, largest employer, that will now be covered with a bus run. They will all come back and go by the new swimming pool center. So both for adults and kids, there's a chance to use the bus to go there. And then in the south, all around the waterfront or riverfront area, both to get people to jobs, but also get students in there to get them back up to their schools or to the swimming pool. So that's about ready to hit the final county council. The other part in that is that the commission chair or the commission liaison to the transit authority is Commissioner Primovich, and he's asked, and Counselor Essen has agreed to be part of a, another subcommittee that looks at future funding. So the good news is we got some additional money outside of the last transportation bill. So the good news is we got some additional money outside of the last transportation bill that goes to transit, somewhere in the tune of about $2 million. But now what the committee is looking at is what's the model for going forward? And it would be things like, do we have enough money to replace the buses for things like, because it's in the master plan of considering, do we have Saturday and Sunday service? Do we have expanded coverage for us in particular, between us and maybe Hillsborough or us and McMinnville? So that, they're going to start looking at money. So Counselor Essen will be on that and we'll see where that comes back to you. The other one in there included a provision for a downtown transit center. In the draft plan, it looks to what the proposal to the group was, well, we'll look at this something beyond three years. We've actually asked them to consider a site in town now, using other county money and then having the Transit Authority pay back the county. So two of the commissioners are actually looking at that. And hopefully, at our next advisory committee meeting, they'll be able to deal with that. And that gets us through the goals with the exception of IT later this evening, Mayor.
Right. Any further questions from the staff or the council at this time? Any further business before us at this time? Then we will recess the work session and we will reconvene at approximately 7:05. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the Newburgh City Council Business Session for May 7, 2018. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor, all present, with the exception of Council President Bacon, who is excused.
Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have the honor of introducing some special guests this evening. Mr. Toby Hutchinson, Assistant Scout Master for Troop 520 of Newburgh. And Toby, if you introduce your group and what they're here for, I would sincerely appreciate it. So would you come forward to the microphone, push the button on the silver button on the right, and introduce your group?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name is Toby Hutchinson of Troop 520, and I'm here with a few select boys to work on our citizenship in the community merit badge. One of the requirements is to sit in on a jury case, court case, or city council meeting. I typically like to have them stay within their city council and listen to what you guys have to say to the new business. What we're going to do is we're going to take one of the proposals or actions from this meeting, and we're going to go outside, we're going to have a little chat about it, talk about the pros and the cons, what they thought about it, what they can take from it.
And you're going to give us the outcome?
I would absolutely love to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Well, welcome. And who do you have with you this evening?
Go ahead, it's okay. I'm Kyle. Guys, you can stand up, it's okay. Go ahead.
My husband's embracing.
All right. Congratulations for what you've earned so far, working on your merit badges that you work on. And thank you for being here and your interest in what's going on in our community. Thank you very much for what you do. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
With that, I'm going to move on to presentations. And the first one I'm going to invite is a report from the, our Shealem Valley Chamber of Commerce. So who's going to be doing that? Carl, are you going to be running point on that?
I'm going to be.
You know the drill. Push the button on the right, introduce yourself, and you've got the floor.
Good evening. My name is Carl Biggerstaff. I am the 2018 Chair of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm standing in for the executive committee to go through the Q3 Visitor Center and Tourism Report, which you should all have a copy of. As you can see, Q3, we had 1,572 visitors. I might note that that's identical to Q1, and that's just coincidence. So with regards to website sessions, we added some information. In Q3, we had 485 sessions. The average duration was about a minute 053 seconds, or minute and 53 seconds. Bounce rate's holding in there around 60%. What bounce rate means is the number of visitors that leave the website after visiting one page. So the majority, roughly 60% of the visitors that hit that website, look at a page and then leave it. We added this time the pages that had been most visited for each quarter. Obviously, the homepage is the one you would expect to be most visited. After that, the Plan Your Visit page is what people go to next, and then wine tours, wine tours, accommodations, and things to do. So again, trying to give you a little bit more insight into what happens with the website. With regards to the P and L, the only thing I would note is that personnel costs were down this year, and that's a reflection of not having the CEO's salary, allocated salary portion in that. What we've done instead, of course, the chamber staff, Patty Music and Carla Eravich, continue to support tourism and the visitor center. We have a person named Josh Duder, who is our front office person and handles calls and walk-in traffic for the visitor center. And then various board members have stepped in to fill the role with regards to tourism activities in Cheryl's absence. Any questions so far? Other than that, we spent a total of about $9,100 in Q3. You can see the breakdown. The majority of that went to sponsoring the Camellia Festival and the Oregon Truffle Festival. Any questions?
None so far. Continue.
Would you like, would you like to move to the next document?
No questions on this one, so I yes.
Okay. Thank you. So one of the tasks that we committed to at the last meeting was to go find out what our, get some benchmarks on visitor center walk-in cost. And you will see that in the second document. In addition to that, it was a valuable exercise to actually break out the exact staffing cost associated with the Shealem Valley Visitor Center, which you'll see there, and then the half, the allocation of overhead for the visitor center function. So that's been beneficial in thinking about moving forward with the visitor center and/or the tourism function, depending upon what that decision, what decision is made. Again, you'll find that we, so there's, what we don't collect anymore and used to collect is the actual phone calls. So what I gave you was the last count on phone calls, which was collected in 2013, ran around 838 calls. Otherwise, you're looking at a 2017 count. The count, we have a walk-in counter, and the good news is it collects everybody who comes through the door one way. The other news is that it collects everybody who comes through the door. So there, of those numbers that we provide you on the quarterly report, there are some non-visitors, if you will, or non-locals coming in for questions, to have questions answered. In the old days, we did all this with a manual log. So other than that, you can see how we stand up against other chambers in terms of an average cost per walk-in. You'll note that the low is Medford. That's somewhat of an unusual circumstance. They have a full-time staff person They have a full-time staff person who manages literally 30 to 40 volunteers. That's why, one, the main reason that their, their walk-in cost is so low. And then you'll see that McMinnville, for example, our neighbor down the road, is significantly higher than we are based on those numbers. So those were the data points that, that we were able to provide from our meetings with other chambers. The other thing I'll note is that I did reach out to the Oregon State Chamber of Commerce. They don't collect this information. Basically, as I called around and talked to chambers, I had to ask them to provide it. Some of them were willing to, others were not. And in some cases, for example Eugene and Ben, which we have, they have been helpful in our transition, they simply don't have a visitor center and therefore don't collect those numbers. Any questions?
Counselors, questions or comments for Mr. Biggerstaff? There are none. Appreciate the presentation. There are no questions of the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a presentation on committee activities for the Newburgh 2030 and Riverfront Master Plan. Mr. Rux?
Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So just a few updates on what's going on with Newburgh 2030. So we've signed the grant contract with DLCD, so we got a $50,000 grant award. We've worked through the scope of work. We're matching that to 50/50 projects, or we're matching that with $50,000. It's already budgeted in this fiscal year, and a portion of it's being rebudgeted into next fiscal year. We've gone out for an RFP for consultant services. We're hiring Echo Northwest, so we're in negotiations on the contract for that project. The open tenant is here shortly. We will get that contract in place, then we will start the evaluation process. And the first step in that process is kind of go back and look at our study area that we established in Phase 1, make sure it's still correct, and we'll be analyzing a little over 10,000 acres of land within the study area. So that's everything within a mile to a mile and a half of our existing urban growth boundary. Then we're going to do a serviceability analysis, which is a high-level analysis, how we can provide sewer, water, storm, and transportation to portions of that 10,000-plus acres of land. We'll also be working with DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development, and the Land Conservation and Development Commission on doing some what we call technical fixes to the administrative rule for Division 38. Originally, that work was supposed to be completed by the end of June. Probably now looks like it'd be completed somewhere towards the end of September, maybe the first part of October. We need that work done in order to do the buildable lands inventory analysis for residential land and employment land. You may remember, we were talking before in several meetings at council about some of the anomalies we found of what was considered partially vacant, though it was fully developed, if it's tax exempt, and how does the assessor's data work. We've met with the assessor, understand how they categorize property. We've shared that with DLCD, saying you really need to go talk with the county assessors because they already have things in administrative rules and Department of Revenue of how they categorize land and values. They said that they would do that as well. Then we'll go through, finish up that buildable lands inventory, then go back and relook at the serviceability of land. So think of it, I mentioned earlier, in work sessions, kind of like a funnel. Start broad, and we keep getting narrower and narrower. And that'll come up with what we identified as additional land we need and where that land could come from around the existing city. But until we have the buildable lands number, I can't tell you how many acres of land we may need. But I've also shared with you, over the next three to five years, the number of residential units that we're looking at, which are over 1,600, so that will continue. And so this inventory, we structured it in the model so that we can keep track of all the new houses that are built, and so it will have real-time data on what's vacant and partially vacant. So that's what's kind of going on with Newburgh 2030. Oh, finally, there's a Citizens Advisory Committee that will be providing oversight and guidance to consultant and to staff through that process, and that's a group that you've already appointed. Mayor brought that forward to you, and council concluded with that. On the Riverfront Master Plan, again, we've completed our contract negotiations with ODA. We've signed that contract. Angelo Planning Group is the lead consultant. Subconsultants for that project include, hopefully, don't forget, somebody, Wallace Engineering, Walker Macy, Leland Consulting Group, and Jacobs, and that was the merger between Jacobs and CH2M Hill. No, Jacobs is the one that's working on 2030. Excuse me, got that wrong. Too many consultants. And so we kicked this project off in April. We had our kickoff meeting, then we did an initiation meeting. Consultants were here for a half a day, a little over half a day. We talked about process, clarity in the contract, making sure everybody understood what was going on. We took the consultants out for a tour of the 400-acre study area. So remember, Ninth Street on the north, Hess Creek on the east, Shehalem Creek on the west, Willamette River on the south. Took them out, so we went to Ewing Young Park, we went to the bypass, we went down to the old landfill, we went to the West Rock Mill site, we looked at the residential areas, infill opportunities south of Ninth Street, toured the West Rock site on foot to see the topography, the slopes, they got to get inside the buildings. So it was kind of enlightening for, for the consultants to be able to see something like that. We had an orientation meeting with our Citizens Advisory Committee for this study area as well. About half of the members were able to attend, but it was good. There was a lot of good questions. We'll be having the first official meeting for the contract with them on May 23rd, so it'll be here in this room at 6:00 PM. Public is invited. There will be opportunity for public comment, and the consultant will do-
Is the date again?
May 23rd, 6:00 PM, in this room. There will be the opportunity for public to provide public comments on the riverfront process and plan. Each of our Citizens Advisory Committee meetings will have that public input opportunity. We'll be doing survey work out in the community as part of this. We'll be doing two open houses, inviting the public, but we'll also do electronic survey work, kind of like an online open house process, be able to get into people's living rooms rather than coming to see us. We're going to them in their homes in that context. This process will take about 18 months to work through, and in the end, what will be in front of you is a packet that we anticipate will be any comp plan and zone changes, any changes to our transportation plan, our water master plan, and our wastewater master plan. So it'll be a comprehensive package. So this is the opportunity for the community to re-envision its riverfront and what they would like to see over the course of the next 20-plus years. Thank you.
Questions, comments for Mr. Rux at this time? Not appearing. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it very much. City Manager's report, please.
So, Mayor and council, Johan, you're city manager. I'll just go over some of the items that are in your email, and did it late because I just got back from the airport, so. But it's, the press also has that, both the radio station and the graphics. Last couple of weeks, we spent a lot of time budget committee, as you were there too, and very pleased we got the, the budget approved for this year. In addition to that, taking that, we'll go to the next step, which is really shooting for July at working on long range and closing the budget gaps for, for subsequent years. So that'll take a lot of the activity, and we just, we haven't started, we're continuing to do that work. We also work with bypass committee, and this is getting ready for the new legislative session. Where do we go next? Where do we find funding? And what is it that we want to tell the legislature? So all the partners are still engaged. You just have sent a letter of support, so now all of the traditional partner, or the historic partners of the bypass, again, are going back to the state and saying, please complete the rest of the phases for the bypass. Probably a separate setting, but I think that the council, and I'll ask Doug to, if not tonight, Mayor, through an email, talk about a controversy that's been raised about the buildings division between the state. And this has to do primarily with contracts for building services. And if you remember that, we have three right now that we do, building inspection service in addition to planning for Dayton, Dundee, and Lafayette. And the state has made, state and the Attorney Generals or Department of Justice have made some determinations, basically the way we've been doing in the past, they don't feel are legal, and some, so some contracts beginning, and that means the whole state has been doing it illegally. By as soon as July 1, some services are, the state's saying, you can't do that anymore. So there's a lot to that, and again, if there's time tonight, Doug can cover it, or we'll do it through an email. We've had ongoing discussions with West Rock, the, you know, the company that owns the waterfront or the, the mill property on the riverfront. You've heard about Citizens Committee. That's going forward while there's another parallel track that Doug is carrying it on with those owners and their consultants. We heard earlier about the transit advisory meetings that Council Esson and myself have been doing. We also received this afternoon, after the close of business, Truman received a purchase and sale proposal from the animal shelter, the Friends the Animal Shelter, so we'll give him a chance to go through that, meet with animal shelter, and then the next step is to schedule a public hearing in front of you to consider that. We're also working nearing completion of the request for interest on the Butler property, and we're, we took a little bit more time because we want to use this as the basis for actually, with the Downtown Coalition and the Chamber of taking that one document, and then that becomes the, the brochure where we're saying, hey, if you're interested, we have some opportunities for infill, both on First, Second, and Hancock. So that, hopefully tomorrow, and then I get it to Doug, and then we'll get it out on the streets, with looking at the mid to the end of July for proposals coming back to you. We met with two commercial brokers, and this is again about energizing people to look at the infill opportunities. And just on those three streets alone, we've probably got close to a dozen properties that, you know, are good targets and good opportunities for people building mixed-use development in there. We're also about ready to publish a, in cooperation with the Downtown Coalition, a brochure that will be available for also apps on phones and on the website of a art brochure, and it's public art, and I think you'll be very pleased with that, and we're helping with the, the printing for that. And then the Downtown Coalition and the Community Development Department will be working on coming soon a, another downtown mural. And this is through the help and the sponsorship of private individual, but it was through the Rotary Auction that a individual from town is now employing two Fox students to do a mural in town. And then you heard earlier that we're doing some more fact-finding and get the agreement done for the transfer, the fire service to happen on July 1. And then in your packet, also Doug did a report to the city club about the level of activity in town, of development and the, the many different subdivisions, and, and over 1,000 units that we believe are coming over the next 18 to 24 months to town, and I've listed all those in your packet, and it's been pretty widely distributed. So, oh, and also, I refer to things incorrectly, I call them the riverfront or the waterfront. Our city recorder is reminding me, I need to be calling it the proper name. It's the riverfront, so. So all the stuff about the committee, it's one, one group, the Riverfront Committee. Mr. Mayor?
Any questions, comments for the city manager? None appearing. I have the, really the pleasure of reading a proclamation for you. Yeah, all right. And this is a proclamation recognizing Municipal Clerks Week, May 6 through May 12, 2018. Our local government's oldest position is the municipal clerk. That's the oldest position of our local government. The true worth of the, of the municipal clerk's office is not often realized, and the International Institute of International Clerks, Mary Kaiser, said, "But clerks perform some of the principal functions of the democratic process. One of the most important responsibilities clerks for administer is advising their municipalities counsel of legislative restrictions that apply to ordinances, resolutions they wish to enact." With that, I would like to recognize our city clerk and all city clerks, and recognize the week of May 6 through May 12, 2018. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas local clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas local clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it's, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by myself and the city council, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Newburgh, that we proclaim May 6 through May 12 as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our city recorder, Sue Ryan, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In witness thereof, I have hereon set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Newburgh to be affixed to this proclamation on this seventh day of May, 2018. Sue, it's a pleasure for me to give you this proclamation. Oh, we're going to be, oh my goodness. These photo ops. You're in the way, Scott.
Just look down so that doesn't catch you in the eye.
All right. The proclamation?
Thank you.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
And let's, there you go. All right. City Manager? Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a clerk would like to say a word.
Who would like to say a word?
You know, me. The city recorder.
I don't have anything written that you've signed, if you want.
So what I want to do is thank the council, because without democracy, we couldn't function without you. And so, you know, I wouldn't have a job if we didn't have you volunteer. So I wanted to say that to all of our volunteers, too, because we have a lot on committees and boards and commissions that all spend a lot of hours on behalf of the community as a whole. And I don't think a lot of people realize how much time you folks actually put in doing your volunteer work, so.
Thank you. Thank you. We're now at the point of public comments, and I have one person signed up for public comments this evening, and I remind those people that are doing it that we're asking you to keep your comments to a five-minute period. We have a Mr. Rick Lipinski that has signed up, if you would come forward, push the button, the silver button on the right, and introduce yourself.
I'm Rick Lipinski with Newburgh Animal Shelter Friends. First of all, I'd like to apologize for the delay in moving forward with the purchase of the animal shelter. The tax and legal issues are more complex than we had anticipated, and it's taking some time to work out the details. I also want to thank all the folks who attended our fundraiser last week, Wine and Whiskers, it was a smashing success and got us further along on the path to raise enough money to purchase the shelter. But I would like to take this time to bring you all up to date on the reasoning behind our purchase offer. I'll start with the building itself. After it was decided to use the present location provided by the city, there was a lot of back and forth with NASF, the city, and the neighbors in the area. The building is located well off of Sandoz Road for a couple of reasons. Some of you may or may not know that the back one-third of the building was not constructed as planned due to budget constraints. This back third of the building consisted of more dog kennels and storage areas. When we began excavation for the building, it was discovered that a layer of soil would have to be removed because it was not structurally sufficient to support a building. In short, it's kind of swampy back there. So it was decided it was more efficient to do the excavation as if we were going to build the whole building. That way, when we expanded to its intended size, it would be a simple matter to add the extra kennel space that we needed without going through the extra expense of having to prepare the land. The area on the east side in front of the building was originally intended for parking. The parking area was not installed, again, due to budget constraints. As you are all aware, and as a matter of fact, as the city manager just mentioned, Newburgh area is growing, and we will eventually require the additional kennel space to serve the city. I can say with certainty that when we apply for a building permit to expand the kennel space, the very first words from the city will be, where are you going to park? As we add square footage, you will mandate that we add additional parking spaces, and the only area to add parking will be on the east side. So when the shelter does need to grow, the east side would not be available for expansion as some have suggested. But really, the most problematic issue is with the neighborhood. The neighbors in the surrounding area, as you might expect, were not thrilled with having an animal shelter in their neighborhood, their chief concern being noise from barking dogs. After several meetings with the neighbors, a compromise was reached. The building would be placed as far from Sandoz as we could, given the shape of the property that the city was allocating for the shelter. Let me just quote from the Animal Shelter Concept Plan that was part of the process produced by the then, I believe he was city engineer, Larry Fain, and this goes back to 2009. The facility is to be designed to reduce or mitigate animal noise where practical. Initially, it is planned to have a landscaping and parking area between the building and Sandoz Road, with the building front to be 100 feet back from the property line. The three functional areas would be arranged such that the administrative area would be up front, the kennels next, then the open storage and future kennels. That arrangement of functions further removes the kennels from the residential neighbors to the east. The city mandated this placement to address the concerns of the neighbors. As we move forward and purchase the building, we will of course honor the city's commitment to the neighborhood, as we are sure you would appreciate. All of this is by way of explanation as to why we need to purchase the building on the lot that was shown on the original blueprints for the building and that have been on file with the city for the last several years. Once we expand the kennels, the building will extend to the current fence line. We need the original approximately 50 feet beyond the current fence line to provide for future dog exercise area. We are asking for no additional property, only the property that was originally intended to go with the animal shelter as shown on the site plan that is currently on file and was accepted by all parties when construction commenced. Let me just say bad on me for not realizing right away the discrepancy in the property line shown on the appraisal. We all assumed that the appraisal was being done using the map that the city has on file, rather than an arbitrary line drawn on an aerial picture of the animal shelter. As I mentioned before, we all know that Newburgh is going to continue to grow, which means more people and more animals. In order for the animal shelter to best serve the city going forward, we will eventually need that back third of the building. So I respectfully request that the city, as we progress in negotiations, consider the animal shelter building and the property as shown on the original maps that were approved and permitted by the city. Thank you so much for giving me the time to address you this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Lipinski? None appearing? Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it very much. With that, we will move to the consent calendar, pleasure of the council. Counselor Corey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar with the changes mentioned earlier on the minutes.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar with corrections on the city minutes. Is there any further discussion?
Who is the second? I'm sorry, I was answering a question. Okay, Corey Johnson.
Any further discussion? The question's been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, none appearing. And with that, we move into a public hearing. And this will be a legislative hearing this evening. And it'd be a legislative hearing to consider the ordinance amending the text of the Newburgh Comprehensive Code and the Newburgh Municipal Code to require large residential annexations or urban growth boundary expansions to include some R3, multiple-family residential land, and defining the terms of large annexation and some R3 zoning. Are there any conflicts of interest or objections to jurisdiction on the part of the council? None appearing? Staff record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So we initially opened the legislative hearing on this on April 2nd, and you did the first reading of the ordinance that evening. A question was raised that evening regarding water hardship requests, and I will get to that, but just a kind of brief recap, because it's been a month since you've touched this. So this proposal initiated with an annexation that was occurring up off of North Valley Road, and some convoluted nature of language that was in our comprehensive plan, and the lack of language that was in our development code from work that was done back in 2009 as part of the Affordable Housing Task Force. Intent was good, there was just missing a few pieces. So the Planning Commission initiated a Comprehensive Plan Development Code amendment back in May of 2017. So we worked through with the Planning Commission how to clean up and make sure that there were, clean up language in the comprehensive plan, and to make sure that there were links to implementing regulations in the development code. You may remember the issue was turning on two points, the definition of large for an annexation, and the definition of some for R3. So the Planning Commission worked through this and came to a resolution that large means a net of 15 acres or more, so that could be one parcel or a combination of parcels, and that some is 10% of that net area have an R3 designation. At your April 2nd meeting, the question was raised about water hardship, and so on page two of your RCA, which is on my packet, page 83 of the overall packet, we've provided some information to you in regards to Newburgh Municipal Code 13.15, which regulates water hardships. You had a discussion on April 16th regarding a water hardship that was brought before you. For clarification, I will try to explain a couple of examples. So let's say you have a piece of property that is within the urban growth boundary but not annexed to the city, and let's say that their well went dry, and their property was less than 15 acres in size. They have two options at that point. They could apply to the city to annex that property into the corporate limits of the city, and apply the comp plan and zoning designations that we have on the books for that. And once that annexation's done, and they have to show that they can, you know, serve the site with public infrastructure within three years, they could apply, we'd go through the process through Planning Commission and City Council, and they could annex that property, and they could connect to the public water system. Scenario two is that you have a property that's adjacent to the city limits, but is larger than 15 acres in size, and their well goes dry. They have the opportunity to annex that property to the city, but in this case, because it's larger than 15 acres in net size, is that they would have to go through the process to change a portion, 10% of that property, to R3. So they'd have to go through a comp plan and a zone change, they'd have to go through a transportation system, TPR analysis, and we'd have to look at our water master plan to make sure that that additional density would work at that location. That's option two, scenario two. Scenario three is you have a property that is not contiguous to the city limits, it's smaller than 15 acres in size, and their well goes dry. In that process, they would have to go through NMC 13.15, prepare an application that would go to our engineering division, that would be brought forward to the council, and you would have to evaluate that based upon the criteria that are in Chapter 13. If you agreed to do a water hardship extension, or allow that connection to occur, they would have to do an annexation agreement with the city. If it's smaller than 15 acres, the issue of R3 doesn't come into play. But at the time that that property would become contiguous to the city limits, then they would have to go through the process and make an application to annex that property. Alternative scenario four is similar situation, but the site is larger than 15 acres in size. Similar, they could apply for a water hardship, go through engineering, comes to the city council, you would review it against the criteria. If your determination was yes, you wanted to grant that hardship, that annexation agreement would have to have language in it that the time that you are essentially contiguous to the city, you would have to annex, but you would have to have some R3, and you'd have to go through the comp plan, zone change, TPR, and the water analysis. So hopefully that's clear. I tried to put that into words, but I'm hoping that my verbal skills are a little clearer than my writing skills at times. You asked that we come back to further address this water hardship issue, and I think during your work session, Counselor Johnson later has a motion to address that, because we were going to come back on June 16th, 18th, whatever the second meeting is, in June, and have additional conversation on that. With that, Mayor, I have concluded my presentation.
Questions of the councilors or the presenter at this time? Excuse me, none appearing. I have nobody signed up for any public comment on this since we move into the comment time. We had already begun.
Public comment was closed, was it?
Come on, Rick. You know the rules.
Well, no, I thought it was closed at the last meeting when you moved into this one, so I didn't. I apologize. Good evening, Mayor Andrews, city councilors, city staff. You know, we're now into this process since 2009. We've now gone through, you know, quite a number, quite a few meetings on the need. We've talked about the need for R3 in our communities. It doesn't seem that there's many other ways for this to happen. And again, this is coming not just from the group in 2009 that first brought this proposal to you all, where it was approved. It then has been brought up again by the group Housing Newburgh that's just shy, or just over 40 people, 40 community members, that believe that this is a good move for our community. So I hope that without further ado, you all will pass this, and we will move on to the next item that Housing Newburgh is putting forward and that you've all have already heard about. So, that's all. Thank you.
Questions for Rick? Thank you, Rick. Be sure and give that to Sue. There being nobody further that wanted to speak on this one, we will close the oral testimony, and is there, have we had any other written communications in the interim?
No, not on this ordinance.
Thank you. We will close the public testimony portion, and we will look to staff for closing remarks, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Doug Rux again. So staff's closing remarks are the recommendation, which is to adopt ordinance number 2018-2826 as recommended by the Planning Commission in Resolution Number 2018-338.
With that, I'm going to close the hearing and move into deliberations. You have before you a ordinance amending the text of the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and the Newburgh Municipal Code to require large residential annexations or urban growth boundary expansions to include some R3 family residential, and defining the terms of large annexations and some R3 zoning. You had explained to you the, what some and the other restrictions that have been adopted and forwarded to us, so with that, pleasure of the council. Counselor Corey?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2018-2826.
And read by title only?
And read by title only, yes.
All right. Corey and Murray. Is there any further discussion? None appearing? The question's been called for. City Attorney?
Ordinance number 2018-2826, an ordinance amending the text of the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and the Newburgh Municipal Code to require large residential annexations or urban growth boundary expansions to include some R3 multifamily residential land, and defining the terms large annexation and some R3 zoning.
This is a roll call vote. City Recorder?
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Essen? Counselor McKinney?
Yes.
Counselor Corey?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. And we'll now move to the to new business, and you have before you a resolution, 2018 I think I just got ahead of myself here. No, I'm sorry, that's already, resolution No, I'm sorry, that's already, Resolution 2018-3453. Mr. Rux?
Thank you, Mayor Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So, back in June of 2017, the TLT Ad-Hot Committee prepared Destination Development-Marketing Grant Program. That material was brought forward to the City Council on June 19th before we went out for a solicitation. So, back in January, a proposal was brought forward to you recommending grant applications under this particular program. The TLT Committee had identified funding three projects. The first was the Newburgh Downtown Wineries Association, the second was the Haylam Cultural Center for the Culinary Enrichment Center, and the third one was Wolves and People. So, the total of those three grants was $300,000. There are funds that are budgeted in Fund 19 for that purpose. At that January 16th meeting, the council heard the proposal and the recommendation from the TLT Committee, and you heard some additional comments that were provided by individuals who were at that particular meeting. The council asked that they send this back to the TLT Committee for reconsideration. So, we have done that and gone back to the TLT Committee. In the interim, staff did some additional analysis and had conversations with Yamhill County's Planning and Building Department. And so, there's a few points of clarification. So, Wolves and People has a conditional use to operate the brewery that's there. And that was granted and is noted in your staff report. Wolves and People obtained a second approval from Yamhill County for agritourism, and that was to hold 18 events a year. And what that was for is to allow for a food cart to be located at Wolves and People when they were holding those events. And there are stipulations in the county order about the parameters of what they can and cannot do. So, this TLT grant application was to construct a trail that goes from Wolves and People up to A to Z Wine Works. And that trail is roughly a mile and a half, two miles in length. And it crosses, of course, two properties. So, staff had a conversation based upon comments that were made before the council to Yamhill County about, does that require any land use approval? And as we've noted in your report, is that, well, it may. Is that Wolves and People would need to have a conversation with Yamhill County about if they do need a land use approval for that trail because it crosses two properties. So, we went back to the TLT Committee on March 7th after we gathered this additional information. And they re-reviewed the grant request at the direction of City Council. And they came back and discussed it. The minutes of that meeting are in your packet, so that you have it. And in the end, the TLT Committee recommended approval of the grant award. And as we noted in your staff report, that that vote was 10 to 2. As I've noted, there are funds available for a grant of the size of $30,000 in Fund 19 for this fiscal year. I think I will conclude there. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Counselor Corey?
Doug, it's my understanding from the, from what I'm reading in the recitals and actually at the bottom on the resolves, that if we approve the $30,000, it's going to be held by the TLT until Wolves and People for sure gets the proper permits from the county. They're not just going to award it and give it to them and then the county doesn't approve the permits. That's what I'm concerned about.
Yes, Counselor. So, the way we wrote Number Three in the resolves, and I think I'll read this one, is Wolves and People is required to obtain any land use approvals from Yamhill County prior to any dispersment of any TLT Destination Development Marketing Grant Funds. If no land use approvals are required, Wolves and People must provide documentation from Yamhill County that no land use approval is required before any dispersment of grant funds. Now, in these larger grants, in the small grants that you've awarded, you know, $2,500, $5,000, in those small grants, we work through the grant contract, gets executed, reviewed by City Attorney, signed off by the City Manager, and then we do through the process and we cut the check. On the larger grants, we don't do that same process. We hold the funds, we work through a schedule, there may be an initial dispersment, and as there are milestones that are met, additional funds are released.
Counselor Corey? Corey?
The trail that's being proposed, $30,000 is a lot of funds for a two-mile trail. If all you're going to do is take a tractor and scoop out, maybe put some gravel over it, to me, that's a lot of money. But aside from that, is the trail going to be available for use to the public free of charge? Or is it a trail that's only open during business hours between these two businesses, for these two businesses that are for-profit businesses? Or what's the situation with that?
Counselor, respectfully, I would like you to ask that question of the applicant and let them explain it, if that would be acceptable.
You will have that opportunity. Counselor Johnson?
Hi. You mentioned a conditional use permit. Is there a time limit for that or does that just continue to roll?
It continues to roll forward, but it is to Wolves and People. And that's based on my reading of the approval that they received from Yamhill County.
So, as long, follow on?
Follow on?
So, as long as they stay in business and are operating a business there, they're allowed?
Brewery in the tasting room, yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions of staff at this time? We have an individual signed up that would like to speak to us. Christian Denna-Bent. I messed it up. Christian, my apology. If you'd come forward, push the button on the right, identify yourself, and I would like to have you keep your comments to five minutes, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counselors. I'm Christian DiBenedetti. I'm the founder and head brewer of Wolves and People Farmhouse Brewery. And I'm here simply to say thank you for the opportunity to apply. This is a very important grant. And I would especially like to thank the TLT Committee. It's a volunteer committee. It's a lot of time and work and a very complicated topic at times. So, I am very grateful to everyone on that committee for giving us the chance to get together, propose our idea, and then get together to hash out some details. So, I'd like to point out, too, that the committee did vote, as we just heard, in favor strongly the first time, and then 10 to 2 on the second round after a lot of questions and answers that I think helped everyone there understand what is, what we hope to do with the project. So, I hope the City Council will follow the recommendations of the TLT Committee and support our project. We believe it's innovative and will bring a greater interest and participation in our unique and well-regarded wine and beer industries here in Newburgh. That's all I have. I'm here for questions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Corey, you had a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the same question I asked earlier of Doug. The trail is a one- to two-mile trail between two businesses. Is it going to be open to the public at all or is it just during business hours for those businesses? What's the goal with the trail?
The goal is to link the two tasting rooms. So, customers will come only during business hours. It would not be open. You have to keep a trail used in a responsible way and limit access during off hours certainly. So, when the brewery and winery aren't open, there wouldn't be an open and free access. It's also private property shared by the landowners in question. So, you know, that is how we plan to do it. So, not like a state park or a city park. We have some great ones of those around, but more of a private trail operated by our mutual businesses.
Any other questions for Christian at this time? Counselor McKinney, Counselor Murray? Nice to you, Christian. There was, I can remember at the TLT meetings that there was a talk of your pavilion later on. Is any portion of the $30,000 dedicated to that pavilion or is this solely into a trail? Or what is the nature of the, what are you going to be investing $30,000 in?
Yes, that's a good question. After some correspondence that I had with Ken Friday, who is the Land Use and Planning Director for Yamhill County, asked me about the pavilion. Together with our partners at A to Z, we decided to hold off on building any kind of trail, sorry, excuse me, any kind of pavilion, any kind of structure, since that does require an additional land use action. So, the grant is intended to, as we stated in the project proposal, to really focus on excavation. There is a very sort of curved natural topography to the land, kind of steep in some places. So, the funds would be used to shape and make the trail safe and accessible and nice looking. We also set aside money in there to build signs and create signage that tells the story of the trail, the wine and beer industries here in Newburgh and Yamhill County, our two shared businesses, and then the city itself. So, that would be kind of a long-term project to commission those signs, finish the wording, and have those constructed. And then finally, some money set aside as we put in the proposal to promote this as an attraction for the city.
Follow on, please. Follow on. What is the nature of the surface of your trail? You probably would have some drainage issues there perhaps, I don't know.
Oh, it's...
But what's the surface of your trail?
Well, it's an orchard and a vineyard. So, it passes through sections of roadway that are already built and gravled and really sturdy, and then there are sections that are just, you know, hard-packed dirt. So, in meetings with the winery, there are some questions about the layout of their future vineyard plantings. So, you know, there'll be sections of the trail that aren't exactly known in between here and there, but the route will certainly wind through the areas that we identified. But the exact route may change based on some of their plans for great plantings in the
What's the partnership that you have with A to Z?
Just friendship. We've been neighbors for as long as I can remember, and we...
Let me go a little bit further. Operating hours, are there going to be access on their end or only access on your end? Tell me how that's going to work out.
We've talked about that. We want to share access through, you know, to the public...
May I ask who's "we"?
Oh, A to Z Wine Works and Wolves and People. We've had meetings about this. We think the trail should be open to the public, i.e. customers, or anyone who visits us on either end of the trail during the normal business hours. I think A to Z Wine Works is 11 to 5 right now, and our hours are a little different than that. But we would work together to find common hours between the two businesses when the trail is open. Otherwise, we'll swing a gate shut and ask that no one traipses around on the trail. So...
Is there a fee associated with using the trail?
Pardon me?
Is there a fee associated with using the trail?
No. The idea that we have to count the number of visitors and keep track of how people are using it is to hand out a sort of a free passport, if you will, that earns a stamp on either end and, you know, sort of a participation, you know, bonus in a way for someone to go back and forth and show that they've taken the effort to walk up and back. But we don't want to, we don't want to charge entry per se. You know, people taking the effort are going to huff and puff a little bit on the way. So, it's a bit steep in the middle, so it'll be, we think participating is a good enough cost.
Does this passport that you're going to have or whatever it is, does that require the purchase of any kind of product in order to get one?
No. We have yet to hammer out some of the details, but the idea is really just to incentivize people to enjoy this attraction, come and say, hey, I've done this, I've walked back and forth, I've enjoyed this setting and scenery, and, you know, I've got the stamp to show for it. But certainly, it could go the opposite way to potentially, you know, discount, for example. If someone does the hike, earn a dollar off on a taster of wine or beer, something that we've talked about, but haven't made a firm decision on.
Thank you. Counselor Corey? Counselor Corey?
Yes. Now, you mentioned the city, the city folks coming out there and using your facility and A to Z and using the trail. In your experience, what tourists from outside the area use those facilities? Is there a great number, a 5% number? Can you come up with some kind of percentage on tourism that comes in, maybe because of those businesses being there and those people would be using that trail?
Well, I can't speak in detail for A to Z Wine Works because, you know, I haven't gotten those numbers from them per se. But I can speak about Wolves and People. In the last year, we've had about 25,000 visitors and steady web traffic and a lot of interest from all over the region, especially Newburgh, Yamhill County, Portland. But going further beyond to, you know, Eugene, Ashland, in fact, the entire Pacific Northwest, we see visitors from frankly, all over the world. We do keep track of a mailing list where people are from. We have about 3,500 people on the mailing list now that are from all over the U.S. and increasingly from overseas, too. And they're coming to experience the, you know, the great beer of Oregon. And particularly, we're grateful that people have discovered us or heard about us, so they want to come and learn about us. And so, we're really lucky in that way to see so many guests coming in from overseas and far away.
I think these two are ahead of you. Counselor Johnson, Counselor Essen, Counselor Murray?
Tonight, we heard our Community Development Director mention that there may be some land use issues with the trail. Have you had any discussions with A to Z or county land use about construction of this trail?
Just a brief conversation by email with Ken Friday that the only question regarding land use had to do with the pavilion because a new building attached to our business would trigger a land use or site design review. And for reasons beyond that, our own planning and our own goals, we set aside the pavilion idea for later. Certainly, we would like to build a shelter for our customers at some point where they can get out of the rain when it's not the middle of August. So, that's something that we are tabling and putting down the road later, hopefully, to have greater shelter. But to my knowledge, there is nothing that would prohibit private landowners from building a walking path.
Follow on?
Follow on?
So, have you specifically asked the county if you're allowed to put this trail in or not?
Not specifically, not specifically, but to my knowledge, there isn't nothing that prevents a homeowner or a private business owner from building a trail.
Okay. One more?
And I should note, too, that it doesn't relate to the service of alcohol. There will be no alcohol served on the trail. Customers cannot walk on the trail carrying alcohol either direction.
Okay. One last one. And are you, if we were to put a condition on here that said we'd request that you provide us some proof from the county that you don't need to have land use approvals for that trail, would that be a problem?
Absolutely, we could, no, no problem at all. Absolutely, could we go looking for that and get some more detail as needed.
Counselor Essen?
Since this is going to be a publicly financed trail, do you know if you're going to meet handicap restrictions or will it be handicap accessible for the grade?
Well, I don't think $30,000 would be sufficient, unfortunately, for a paved trail going the distance. But we intend to make the trail as accessible as possible to all persons. The brewery and tasting room on either end are accessible. We have a, you know, ADA compliant parking space and do everything we can to accommodate all persons. The steepness of the trail in the middle, unfortunately, like many trails in nature, are left, we leave those to the users to decide, I would say.
Counselor Murray?
Do you plan on using the Steins Divines as a marketing tool? Do you plan on using the Steins Divines as a marketing tool for your business? And if you do, how do you plan on doing that?
We really view it as a marketing, not just our own business, but A to Z Wine Works and Rex Hill and the city and the region, you know, telling that story. We have set aside some money in that $30,000 to create a marketing plan to reach out to local, national, international media. We've already put some feelers out there and gotten a very rapid response, I would say. It's the kind of thing that I think could create a lot of buzz and interest. People want to see it and experience something like this. To my knowledge, there isn't anything in the world like it. And so, the marketing plan would really be to tell the story of, you know, how beer and wine are such an integral part of the community here and the economy. And as an aside, I'd mention that, you know, we're really interested in the history here. Wine gets a lot of the, deservedly, the attention, but beer is in the roots of Newburgh. And, you know, Sebastian Brucher came from Bavaria, great beer town, and he himself was a brewer and grew hops. And the more we dig into his history, the more we learn that Newburgh has some unusual history in beer making. So, we intend to shed light on that as well as we grow.
Follow on.
Follow on.
Would you plan to work with the local lodging in the area, hotels with marketing materials for the folks who came into town?
Absolutely. You know, it would only make sense to partner with our local tourism bodies to tell the story, get people interested to come here and try this out. Yeah, that would be our first priority. I mean, it really is a local attraction. We see this as something that has a wider appeal as well, but it would make sense for us to partner, of course.
Any further questions for Mr. Christian? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Doug, you have, want to rejoin us? Yes, ma'am?
I just needed to say for the record that you had written testimony sent to you earlier today-
Thank you.
-by Robert Suppe, and it is also printed out in front of you.
You beat me to it, didn't you?
I did.
Okie dokie. Are there any further questions or comments that you have for staff at this time? I have a question of Counselor Johnson. Is there something you're looking for that is in greater detail than item number three under the resolves?
That's what I was going to ask Community Development Director Rux.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Rux, under item three, is that adequate protection for us as far as land use approvals? Because the way I read this was that we were kind of trusting them to do it, and I just want to make absolutely sure, and not to question them, but just make sure that our bases are covered. Do you think number three under the resolves is strong enough language to protect our investment?
Counselor, yes, I do believe that it is. An important point of clarification is if they need land use approval, it's easy enough for me to email Ken Friday as well. Before we did any grant award is, okay, have you and Wolves and People discussed this? And have you come to a conclusion, yes or no, if you need land use approval? And if they do, then they have to get the land use approval, and we have access to that decision. And if it's a no, what we're saying is you got to give us written documentation from the county that it does not require land use approval.
Any further questions for Mr. Rux at this time? Counselor Esson.
Is there any requirement that the ADA, well, requirements are met on this trail?
Counselor, I think that goes back to, do they need land use approval or not? Do they need approval from the county, and what would the county standards be? So, the issue at hand is, in a conversation I had with Planning Building Director at the county, is they need to look at, if the trail crosses two property, is there anything in state law, ORS, or administrative rules that then leads it to be that it functions like a park? And then if it does, then there is a land use process. But in my conversations with the director, it was not an affirmative yes or an affirmative no. I have passed on to Wolves and People that they need to have that conversation with the county to get that determination. Now, the other part of that is that there are accessible trails all over the state of Oregon that are under public ownership, so take the Forest Service or BLM. And not all of those trails are ADA accessible. And they use public funds to build and maintain those trails.
Any further questions of Mr. Rux at this time? All right. You have before you a resolution awarding a transit lodging tax destination development and marketing grant for Wolves and People. Pleasure to the council. You going to have debate first? You going to have debate first? We're going to debate, or we're going to discuss?
Discuss.
All right. McKinney, you want to discuss? I continue to find problems with the support of number three of Wolves and People here. I think that this was an unanticipated consequence of the council passing that on to the DLT Committee and some of the other things here. It's, sometimes I agree with Robert Suppe. When I read his testimony and his letter that he published to me, I think that Robert asked all of the right questions, talked about entities for the use of this money, like the Minthorne House, the Wayfinding over by the library, and the Cultural Center, that at this particular time, I would consider personally to be much better use of these funds and more indicative of a tax that local taxpayers don't pay. It's money that comes in from tourists and others. I cannot support the RCA and/or the resolutions if it includes this $30,000 grant to Wolves and People. It's not to say that I wouldn't support it at another date, Christian. I look at this as that there's not enough flesh on the bone to deal with this particular issue. And when there are plenty of entities that are worthy of TLT support, I would much rather think about that. To say that I'm disappointed, that's the wrong word. It's just that it is, it's an unfortunate set of circumstances that I would get something from the TLT and then find myself in a position that I would not recommend their recommendation to us. Counselor Corey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment and then a motion.
You may.
My comment would be, because of number three under resolves, I can support this resolution. And therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2018-3453.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to support Resolution 2018-3453. Is there further discussion? Counselor Esson?
The only thing I'm concerned about is this requires a permit, I guess, in the county from what I'm reading, 2018, and it's another agency is going to be granting these permits. I just have a little problem as to whether or not this has really been thought out and will really work, even if we give them the money, whether or not that permit will be issued, whether there's requirements. And I didn't hear a lot from staff, other than that they talked to them. So, somebody else is going to be in charge of this, and we're just assuming that this is all going to work, and the money's going to be out there. And if it doesn't, what happens? I just, I just don't know. But if somebody's got a reason why they think this is going to work, I'd like to hear it.
Counselor Corey?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to refer Counselor Esson back to the comments that Doug made earlier, the same question I asked him. And he said, "No, the funds are not given out until the permit process is completed through the county and they have a yay on their end." If there's a no, then they have to come back with writing to the TLT Committee or Doug and to be able to get the funds. So, I think that's covered very well, and it's because of resolve number three.
Counselor Johnson?
For me, this is a little difficult one. I always take input from our volunteer citizen committees very seriously, because I don't want them to feel like they're wasting their time. And we did kick this one back for a second time, and they were able to hear some of the controversies surrounding the project, hear from the applicant again, and in reading through the minutes and in calling a couple of the members, kind of got an understanding of where the issues are. As an application, personally, would I support this versus the other six things on here? Probably not. We already have a beer and wine organization getting money. To me, it's a little beer and wine heavy on what we're doing this time, but that's me personally. If the committee had come back with a closer vote, I probably would swing to the no. But I feel like, you know, Mr. Rux has given us some great information. I think the applicant gave us some great information. If this is the way the committee of people who are actually paying the TLT want their money to go, then who am I to stand in the way? So, I'll be supporting this.
Any further comments? Further questions? There was hesitation on the part of the council to begin with, and this needed to be reviewed a second time, so that's one of the reasons we kicked it back. And yes, our Citizens Committee did return it to us with a recommendation that we approve it. There are some questions that are still in my mind as to the appropriateness of it, but I think that I'm going to be probably favoring it only on the basis of the language in the resolves that precludes any distribution until we get the questions answered. And with that, I will probably be voting yes. So, with that, I'm going to have a division of the House on this. The question's been called for.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Corey?
Yes.
Counselor McKinney?
No.
Counselor Esson?
I think I know a yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Andrews?
Yes. And we will now move to a report from staff on the master plan annual review for Sportsman's Air Park.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. Doug Rux, Community Development Director.
Thank you all very much.
So, tonight is your annual report on Sportsman's Air Park. I will be brief. So, this plan was adopted in June of 2006 by ordinance 2006-2647. On the first page of your RCA, it kind of lays out what the objectives were in putting this plan together. A lot of it was to preserve and protect the airpark moving forward in time. So, the plan covers roughly 117 acres, so that's the airpark itself, plus it had land, additional land to the east and to the west of the airpark proper. In that plan, there are various figures that were identified in your RCA. There was a district plan, a sub-district plan, a road plan, a bridge plan, a taxiway plan, utility plan, and a developable area plan. So, I'm going to kind of briefly touch on each one of those. So, in the road plan, to the west of the airpark, there was undeveloped land, was zoned for residential, and I kind of generally outlined what a road pattern would be. And so, as Orchard Lairs, Phase 1 and 2, and Hess Creek, Phases 1 through 4 developed, it generally followed that road network layout. To the east, you've got Ninth Street, which kind of goes into the airpark. And there were some roadway plans that were basically private streets on private property to serve aviation-related industry and hangars and so forth that would kind of run north-south, so north of Ninth Street. That private, think of it as a private drive aisle rather than a roadway, it's private drive, that has not developed yet, it has not materialized. On the bridge plan, there was a bridge that was identified in the plan with basically an aircraft bridge that would take you across the stream corridor and take you over to the area where Orchard's Lair and Hess Creek were developed. Of course, now those are all developed as residential. We take a very small plane, like Stuart Little, it might work. So, I don't think that that bridge is going to materialize over time. There was also some pedestrian bridges. There's one that's been developed that the others have not at this point. The taxiway bridge is kind of tied into that overall bridge plan, so I've already noted that hasn't been done. Utility plan, so the residential area to the west of the airpark has been developed, so it's got sewer, waterstorm, drainage, transportation system is now all in place. We've coordinated with CPRD, supported an application, did a land use approval for them for Friends Park. They're seeking state funding to develop that park for that neighborhood area. The utility plan, basically on the airpark proper, has not developed yet, which kind of leads into the development area plan. And so, as we talked about, the residential's occurred to the west, to the east, additional hangars, a couple have been built, there's some land that has an overlay for aviation-related industries that has not developed yet. We're talking with some potential companies that might be able to go there. So, things will materialize over time. I know it's been 2006, here we are at 2018, you know, 11 years moving into 12. The airport ownership, and so this is an important one. So, we've been under discussion since I've been here with Sportsman's Air Park about a purchase of development rights through an FAA program. And so, we kind of started and stopped, and when the city manager arrived, had some additional airport experience above and beyond what I had, and we've been re-engaged, and we've been having those discussions with them. We're hoping to be able to bring back something for you in a month or so. We're waiting for some additional comments back from the Dale family on that. And that's essentially the update on Sportsman's Air Park.
Counselor Murray, Counselor Johnson?
So, my understanding from the reading is that if the city gets rights to purchase, it helps keep it an airpark and then also gets FAA grants, or federal grants, to help update the airport, which seems like it's harder to get when you're privately owned?
Technically, it would be a one-time grant.
One-time?
This is a pilot program that the FAA has in place, it's been used once so far in the U.S. There've been, at least two other entities have inquired about it. One of those is Sportsman's Air Park, another one is another community in California. So, it's a one-time grant, and the purpose of it is to protect the airport. By purchasing those development rights, you don't have the encroachment of residential or non-aviation, aviation-related industry moving into that area. There may be other opportunities for grants through the Oregon Department of Aviation for this, but for some of you who were here and those who weren't, the purchase of development rights under that concept is if FAA provided a grant, and the city, the grant would actually come to the city, the city would then purchase development rights from the property owner to be able to preserve the operation of the airport. Proceeds, and this is high-level, and a lot of detail needs to be worked out, would go towards an extension of the runway, realigning the taxiways, putting in new lighting system, and some general maintenance pieces. That's kind of where we're at in the discussions right now, to ensure that you have an air- That's kind of where we're at in the discussions right now, to ensure that you have an airport that continues to operate forward in time. When we've talked with council about this in the past, there's been discussions about ongoing maintenance because the airport has to continue. If you take the grant, the airport has to continue to operate as an airport in perpetuity. And if the property owner no longer ran the airport, then it would come to the city. And before, we worked down through a whole bunch of costs for maintenance and so forth. So those are a lot of the details that will come back to you at a later point in time. I just wanted to highlight here that we are in those discussions.
Counselor Johnson?
Hi. The, I've got a couple of questions. First is airport expansion or the extension of the runway. How, I mean, I was looking at some of this, and I lived through the Aurora Airport Master Plan and tower and runway extensions, and that seemed like quite a process. With this airport with the constraints of 219 and some of the other surrounding businesses, how, how would that work?
Well, the extension of the runway would be to the south.
Yeah.
Where it currently terminates, so it's going towards the bypass. So as part of the whole development of the bypass, when they were going through the EIS process, FAA was notified. And you know that the bypass is lower than the airport because of the runway approach zone, the RPZ that's on that end. You know, the information we have in concepts is, you know, there's a retaining wall that goes in, the runway gets extended, we've got a sewer line, it has to have some relocation that would be done so we can continue to have access. Don't want a wall loading over our sewer line, and we have to have access down into Hess Creek. So that's kind of the extension. Yeah, there's lots of little detailed pieces. But they've already put together a concept plan, engineers put together a plan that we have, that we've looked at and are continuing to look at. The taxiways, you know, there are standards for design of those taxiways, and so right now they don't meet current standards, so it's moving them a little further from the runway, making sure that they're parallel to that runway, and then resurfacing the runway itself. If you've ever been out and walked on it, it needs some maintenance. And then the last part is the lighting, so that you can have lighting so aircraft can land in the dark. There could be a system that they turn on, it could be automated, there are different ones that are out there. We haven't gotten down to that level of detail in discussions with them on that.
Follow on.
Follow on.
Recently, a lot of the neighbors over in the Everett area have been in contact with me, and I repeatedly get told that we need to put a light at Second Street. And I know from my experience that there's really no way to do that unless it's going to cost $6 billion. Is that, I mean, what would a good answer to that be?
The answer to that right now would be that ODOT is out doing traffic counts. They were doing them in April and March, and the discussion is about a signal at 219 and Everest. We should have information back the end of May, first part of June, on what those traffic counts, and then the city will have to sit down with ODOT and say, okay, what does this information mean? If warrants are met, then there's an additional process to go through with ODOT about them finding the funds. They've got to do an analysis of if you have a new signal with the Villa Road, 99 signal and the sequencing of that, and then you go down to the Spring Brook and 219, do they all tie together or so forth? So there's more detail. But right now is we're doing traffic counts. On the Second Street piece, yes, we've had conversations with ODOT about that as well because you may have all heard, when the bypass was under construction, when they put up the street signs, the street signs penetrated the airspace of the RPZ, and so they actually had to lower the street signs and relocate some street signs to make that work. So there are height restrictions. Thing is, it's a conical surface that goes from the runway, edge of the runway, and it goes out, and you can't penetrate that airspace for aircraft safety. So that becomes then a challenge at Second Street. We've, we talked about, well, could you do a roundabout instead of a traffic? Well, then you've got the whole geometry because you're in a super elevation on 219, and how would that work or not? Could you put a light on either side, not a mast arm and a pole? Well, would it be high enough, would it meet ODOT standards, would it penetrate the airspace or not? So again, good questions, conversations, they're on our list as well.
Counselor McKinney? A roundabout on the north compromises space and landing. But how far on the south can that runway be extended? Can it be extended all the way to their property line without hitting that wall?
Approximately 300 feet south of the current terminus of the runway. So it's, it's close to the property line. Now, there's another issue. We own a piece of property south of Sportsman's Air Park. For that runway extension to occur, they would have to have conversations with the city about would the city be willing to sell that piece of property or not? Again, that's on our list as part of this purchase of development right discussion.
Follow on. Follow on. So if they were in a position to buy that piece of city property, 300 feet could be augmented by how many more feet? How long?
No more. It'd be 300's the maximum.
300's the max. All right.
Yes.
I have one request, Mr. Mayor. I know that every map, you're, the maps in Granicus or whatever are fairly detailed there. Could you supply us with an aerial view of that, of the airport as it exists now? Not that, not that 2006.
Yes.
Thank you. Can that be distributed to the entire council?
Yes.
Any further comments for Mr. Rux at this time? Okay, thank you. An update on Goal Five.
Dave Brooks from IT Department.
Good evening, Dave. Thanks for your patience.
So I'm going to start off with the goals, and then we're going to, this presentation is broken up per department's goals. So what the goal is, within three years, obtain functional software and hardware that reduces redundancies and duplications by integrating our different systems that we have. And then we wanted to develop the technology plan, which we did, and the focus was really to bring all these applications together and, instead of having duplicates or having short-term fixes. The first department is my department. Starting from the top, we have a multi-year project of redesigning our network. There's really nothing wrong with our network, how it works. We have to redesign it to meet compliance issues. So for example, we have to put network-based barriers in between different department servers. So the finance server can't talk to the police server in general terms, which right now they can. There's no, there's really no cost involved in that, it's just time, and that's kind of our project, that when we have time, we work on it. Mobile device management slash bring your own device. The technology side of this is done, and the application is there to manage mobile. We're just waiting on an update to the employee manual to give us the authority to do some of the stuff that we want to do in order to comply with that. Network security, deferred data cost. There, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail in open session what the security enhancements would be, but it would cost money for us to implement this, and there would be added costs and staff time to take care of the extra service calls that would arise from doing that. Intrusion detection and file integrity and log analysis, that project is completed. We upgraded our email system, that's completed. We're in the process of implementing a disaster recovery site. That entails renting space in a commercial data center and taking some of our waterfall or not in current production equipment that we've already retired and reusing that in a, for backup purposes in case we have an earthquake here or something happens to this building.
Question, if I may?
Yes.
Dave, what are, what are we using for our offsite, offsite storage?
Offsite storage?
Yeah, data storage.
Are you talking, are you talking like how, how, how our backup system works?
Where is that offsite?
For the, for the disaster recovery site, it's going to be in Reno. Yeah.
There was, had been some earlier talk about Idaho.
Yes, we were looking at a data center in Idaho, but that data center closed.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Johnson?
Since we're asking questions. Intrusion, intrusion detection?
Mm-hmm.
What is that? Is that like if a bad guy gets into our network?
Or attempts to.
Red lights go off somewhere?
Or somebody, you know, if we get a ransomware attack, if someone tries to penetrate our firewall, if an employee falls for like a phishing attack where, you know, they go click and run a file that grants someone access to our, to our network.
Okay, great, thanks.
All three of those go together. You have the detection, you have the detection piece that detects if it happens. You have the file integrity in case your intrusion detection doesn't alert you to it. So for example, file integrity would alert me that if you had 1,000 files change their file state in the, in a couple of minutes, that that would be indicative of ransomware encrypting your files. So I watch for that kind of stuff. And then log analysis lets us go figure out how it happened.
Continue.
Oregon ID Theft Protection Act is complete. We have a system that watches for things like social security numbers and things like that being transmitted across the network, and it alerts us. And we've also purchased cyber risk insurance that helps us with that as well. Equipment and network monitoring and alerts, this is complete. Essentially, what this means is if I have a server go down or a high priority network device or anything like that, if anything happens with any of those, it sends an alert to whoever's on call during the evening or during off-hours, and it alerts everybody by email that it's going on as well. Network device upgrades, this is a long-term project. In various years, we've been able to put more money into this than, than, than others. And really what this is doing, it's just replacing aging network equipment. There's really nothing wrong with the equipment other than it's over 10 years old at this point, and it needs to be replaced before we have a failure. The cloud storage alternative, we have a temporary solution in place. In fact, everybody in the council uses it. That's how the city attorney sends large files to you. So that's, it's not the solution that we wanted to use, but we weren't able to fund the bigger solution, and so that's what we've been using, and we're starting to use it in the police department as well. High-speed backup network, our current backup network to all of our sites is running on older radios, and their throughput doesn't give us the bandwidth that we need in order to actually run on them for any sort of time. I'm, I'm down to a couple of phone calls that I can run on it, and really, that's about it. Everybody at those sites would not be able to access their desktops and things like that.
Counselor McKinney? You showed me Jay Harris's cloud machine tonight or whatever. Is that a step in our future?
Well, it's already here, we're already using it. We have virtualized our desktops and given all of our users mobility, so, yeah, they're all gone. But you see Jay Harris and Matt Zuck here with laptop-looking devices. Those aren't laptops, they're actually using them to access the desktop that we provide them, and they can just log into it from any device. So Jay Harris, for example, he goes and when he sits at his desk, he logs on through a regular screen, and he gets his desktop. And then if he goes to a conference room, he can connect to his desktop from there, it'll follow him around. If he's in a mobile place, it'll, it'll work on that mobile device. And he can access it from home across the internet as well.
And they're secure?
Yes. Second to the bottom is SharePoint, and really what SharePoint is, is it's an upgrade to our existing Intranet site. Now, we have our public-facing internet site, newburghoregon.gov. We also have an internal-facing one that's used for employees to communicate with each other. The site that we have now is 12 or 13 years old. The software is not supported, and it's pretty archaic as far as its functionality, especially when you look at current software, what their functions are. The reason why I have an asterisk on this one is you'll see, as I go through these additional slides, all the other projects from other departments that were requested that are affected by this. And this, for the last couple of years, hasn't survived budget. And then project management software, we have a temporary solution. This is internal to IT as well as some other departments. We are essentially buying cloud licenses for other users to use Microsoft Project, and in IT, we're using like glorified Excel solution. First, we'll talk about the Finance Department. They're, they have a desire to replace their Spring Brook software, which is, runs all the financial software, that's their, their financial application. The cost of this, I want to say it was $300,000 or more. Joe, do you remember?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's way up there, so that's deferred indefinitely. Second line is adding more users to Spring Brook. This was a request because other departments can't have access to financial data. Using Splunk, we've, we've alleviated that to a certain point, but it's not the solution that Finance was looking for. Electronic time cards and electronic purchase orders, right now, everything's done by hand, so we print out an Excel document for either one of those, and then we, we, we route it on paper to, for approvals, and Finance, when they're, when they're done with it, it gets routed back on paper to us.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Johnson?
What is Splunk?
Splunk is a, a tool that is used for many things. It's used for security. That's what we bought it for. We bought it for security and compliance and log analysis. And a really good benefit of it is I'm using Splunk to watch all my servers, all my files, and I'm ingesting all those in the Splunk. And once they're ingested in, and so like, that's how I, I can tell you if there's a ransomware attack going on because I'm watching all the logs through this one appliance. Since I already have all those files pulled into this, I can use it for other things, and I can use it for what's called business intelligence. And one thing that you guys see is you get financial reports from the IT department. That is one of the things we've been able to do in Splunk. I could spend an hour on it, but...
Follow on.
Follow on.
If you ever get the chance to go and visit with Dave and watch that Splunk work, it's really cool what he's doing with some of the things in the police department and also Finance, so.
So wrapping up electronic purchase orders and time cards, we have the capability, if we upgrade our Intranet site, in order to automate all of that and to put the workflow in an electronic format instead of a paper format. Automated voice payment for utility building, that was completed. Enhanced reporting from Spring Brook, that's deferred indefinitely. The only solution we have right now is the Splunk reports that everybody's getting. And then upgrade water meters and eliminate the reading of them. So right now, you have employees that go around and they, they, they read all the water meters. We'll be going to a fixed base system where you eliminate that. It's good and bad. We're going to add a lot of Internet of Things devices in the city when we do that. Administration Department, electronic records management is something that's on our radar and not actively working on yet. And then the other items they have were electronic council agendas, that's completed through Granicus, and providing mobile devices to the council. She's had those for some... She's had those for some time now. Police Department, the first four things are all tied together. So in dispatch and police department, they have a records management system. Every report a police officer writes goes through that system. Computer-aided dispatch is our CAD system for our 911 center. Mobile upgrade is the software that communicates between the patrol car computer and the dispatch center. And then mapping is the solution that plots calls that come in into the 911 center. All of those four applications are tied to the same vendor, and they all have to be upgraded together. And so I can't upgrade records management and leave CAD. This is, I believe, the last upgrade we had was more than five years ago. So we're facing a pretty big capital expense in order to upgrade those.
Counselor McKinney? We see so many deferreds up there, David. How does our police department compare with other police departments our size in being able to accomplish those tasks? I guess is what I'm saying, are we handicapped because we've deferred these for too many years?
I wouldn't say we're handicapped because they're working, but on the horizon. So I'm working with applications that were last updated when Windows XP was the flagship desktop application. And I have them working just fine on Windows 7, but I need to move on to Windows 10 at some point, and I expect to have compatibility issues. So we start running into that stuff the longer we wait for that to happen. It's not an issue pressing today, but it's going to happen at some point.
Follow on. We all know that we're only as good as we can communicate with one another. Not every department has licenses to Windows 10, or do any of our departments have license to Windows 10?
We're actually already licensed for Windows 10. The way our Windows licensing works, we, Microsoft has gone to a lot of subscription-based licensing. And so we pay Microsoft every year in order to be licensed. And while we're licensed for Windows 10, we're actually downgraded to Windows 7 right now, and that's what we're standardized on.
Continue.
Upgrade video surveillance, that's, I have that marked as partial. What we did is we, across the city, we had like access control for this building and video surveillance for this building. And then for another building, they had a different product, and they weren't all tied together. And so what we did is we brought all those systems under one. So we have the same appliance that runs video cameras in every building that the city has video cameras in. And all of our access control is tied citywide, and it's managed by the IT department, and it's tied into the user's Windows login account. So what that means is, what was happening before is you would onboard a new employee, and you'd have to go over to City Hall and program their card there. Then you would go to the police department, and you'd program their card there. And then you'd go over to maintenance, and you'd have to program their card out there. And I could keep going and going and going now. And if something happened with that employee and you needed to shut off their account, you had to go to all those places to shut it off, too. So now, when they're, when they come on as a new employee and their user account is created, all their access for their badge is created automatically at the same time. And it's much more user-friendly. It's much more efficient. And we can shut a badge off across all buildings with the click of one button. So that's been a big improvement. The only reason why it's partial is we have some video cameras and mainly the exterior video cameras at the police department here that were put in. And they're run with wiring that is not compatible with anything new that we would do, and it's running through brick. And so that's, as those cameras die, we're forcing the police department to upgrade them. But until those are upgraded, I won't call that project done. Body worn cameras, that's deferred. There's, we've had several talks about it, and it's something that we're going to have to do at some point, the way things are going in the world. Oregon has an issue where the real cost of body worn cameras comes in the form of records requests, because anybody can request any body camera footage for any reason right now. And so we've seen reports of other departments that have deployed body worn cameras, and they've got someone saying, "I want all your video camera footage for whatever time period from all your officers." And you have to go in and you have to edit all the personally identifiable information out of there. And so that's really the impact of body worn cameras right now. E-ticketing is deferred due to cost. And smartphones are deferred, again, due to cost. Smartphones would be a really good addition for police officers. When I talk to other IT managers, most of them have gone with e-ticketing and smartphones, and they've either done body worn cameras or they're in the process of doing it. But if you start thinking about smartphones, they can run law enforcement queries on it. They can possibly use it as their e-ticket writer. They can get their schedule on it. They can access Oregon laws. Right now, they're carrying around books and looking them up on traffic stops and stuff like that. So there's a pretty big list. I won't go into the whole list. There's a lot of things that we could do to make officers more efficient in the field. E-ticketing is the biggest thing you can do to improve efficiency because you're eliminating the records entry both in dispatch and in the court. So what happens when you make it electronic instead of writing that ticket in the field and then having the dispatcher enter it by hand into the CAD system at some point? And then the paper copy goes to the court system, and it gets entered in there again. You can automate all of that. Legal Department, case management database. As, would you say you're all paper?
Truman Stone, city attorney. I think my predecessor was starting a conversion to electronic files, so we have partially paper files and partially electronic files, which is the worst of both worlds, not being fully in one or fully in the other.
I think you're referring more to the document management system. But the case management databases, you want to be able to track everybody.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have any electronic, other than an Excel spreadsheet.
And then electronic discovery software. As we get public records requests and lawsuits and things like that, we're essentially searching by hand, and it's labor-intensive. The results are not to the accuracy level that any of us want. But that's something that we don't have any money to pay for, any sort of electronic discovery suite. Public Works Department. The fats, oil, and grease database is something that they have had for a few years now. This is deferred because they're not ready to tackle this yet. It's something that they want to, but they've got other things that they're working on, so that actually needs to be pushed out. Electronic records management. So they have a lot of training docs and certification documents that they have to keep track of. Heavy equipment operators, and that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about. And they have no way of going and looking up to see what employee has what. So they wanted something that would, they could go query the employee electronically and make sure that they're up to date on everything. Purchase order tracking system. In talking with Public Works, they're issuing a lot of purchase orders, and they just don't know where, what the status of any of them is at any one time. Springbrook, again, our financial system, that data synced with Cartograph. So what Cartograph is, that is the work order system that Public Works Maintenance uses, and they do all their work orders, including anything regarding a water meter. Now, Springbrook is used to bill water meter customers. And so we have a lot of errors where you have maintenance entering in their system, one thing, and then it gets emailed to utility billing. Utility billing then hand enters that system. So what errors you see is they'll drop, like, you'll have 110 North Main Street and 110 South Main Street, and they'll either drop the north or the south, or they won't put it, or they'll put the wrong one in. So those are two different addresses, and now they don't line up. So that's something that we have in progress, and we're about there. We're syncing that data in between those two databases to eliminate errors and to eliminate the duplicate time involved. Cartograph is in the process of being upgraded. Recently, I think last December, you approved a contract to upgrade it. And as it's upgraded, it's going to be expanded to the rest of Public Works. Right now, it's only used in maintenance. The other thing that you'll see is you're going to take all of your Public Works members, and you're going to give them tablets to use this in the field. Right now, you have a worker that gets their assignment from Cartograph. They go out in the field, they complete that work, and then they come back in the office to enter it into Cartograph. So you're going to eliminate all that. They're just going to get it out in the field. Ops Job Cal, that's another work order system. That's going to get integrated with Cartograph, it looks like. So that'll piggyback on the Cartograph upgrade. They had a request to do a penetration test of wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant's industrial control systems. So that's the computer that, and the network that runs all of our water and wastewater treatment plant's systems. We actually did that internally and published them in a report. And then as a result of that, we did some security improvements out there. Upgrade their radio read and pump stations. Right now, how they communicate with all their remote sites is by a one-way radio network coming from the remote site into the controller. And what we have done is we have a test site or a beta site where we have taken a pump station, and we have extended network out there, and we have added access control. We've added security surveillance. We've added like network Wi-Fi. We've added a phone out there. We've added some environmental controls. We can detect if like the floor's wet or if the temperature's too high in that building. So that's, we're going to let them use this for a little while. They're also going to be able to eliminate the radio network at that site and enable two-way communications over the network. So they can talk to the, so the pump can talk to them, and they can talk to the pump. And then based on that, if it's going to continue moving forward, we'll start adding that to all the pump site. New permit software for engineering, that was completed. That's Superion. MDTs for engineers, that's been completed for a while now. The barcoding and RFID inventory tracking, they've tabled that. Again, that's because they got too many other things that they're working on right now. And then we took the Cal Portland property building and turned it into one of our office buildings. And community development was replacing their e-permitting software. Now, they're, it's all electronic, and contractors can submit electronically. They can pay electronically, things like that. Their records and document system, that's deferred, again, through the Intranet site. And then syncing data with the assessor, we have that marked as in progress. We've talked with the assessor. We've met with them. We have facilitated a data transfer between us and the assessor using Splunk at this point. And as we work through this, we're figuring out kind of their business practices and what they do. And in doing that, we're running some models to see if we can predict what the growth is going to be in Newburgh in advance and what the anticipated tax revenue will be so that we can make better budgeting decisions. Because the data's there. We're just not getting the report from them at the same time. So think of it as, in November, we get our check. In a little while before that, we get a report when we've already made our budget cycle. It's already complete. Well, as they go and they assess all these properties, they're entering this into their own database. So what we're doing is we're watching their database. And as they update records, we're pulling that into Splunk, and we're seeing what they're doing, and we're watching for changes. So that's, it's taking us a while because we have to learn it, and they're doing it in a way that we would never expect them to. But it looks like we are getting some good intelligent data out of it.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Johnson?
Can developers submit their plans electronically right now?
I believe so.
I agree.
No?
Doug Rux, community development director. No, that, we're going to get there. We did not propose that in the seventh, in the current budget, starting July. We want to make sure we're working through all the issues with our permit software before we have to go buy some balloon beam software, because engineering and building want to be able, and planning as well, be able to submit plans online, be able to do online plan review and so forth. But it's a little over a year away before we're going to be ready for that.
So that's the end of the technology plan, and again, this is a couple of years old at this point.
It's a couple of years old at this point. How we got to this is city manager Rhodes and I met with every department head and kind of got their wish list together, or their wants and needs. And city manager Han and I are going to go through another round of that here shortly. That's the only way we're going to be able to update this.
City manager?
So one of the purposes is, so it's like, oh, this is way too much. It's like a huge water, you know, coming at us. There is a reason for this, that we kind of forced Dave to put it in language that all of us can understand. And then, as we're doing that, then the goal for all of us on staff and what Matt and I do is to figure out, okay, where are the opportunities? And you heard a couple of them. First, where are the opportunities that by using automation, we can save ourselves on people cost? You know, eliminate people, not so much. I mean, maybe. But looking for places for that. So that's a big deal of what we're constantly going through. The other part is this whole thing with security. So all of us read on the news, you know, about what went happen in Atlanta and Baltimore, and it's constantly, so is that going to happen to us? Dave now explained in language that we can understand, does that work? And then where do we need to go, and what kind of money do we do to continue on? Why this becomes important to you is so that it's not just that you believe it's got all these great people working for you. It's like you need explanation, as we all do, to explain to someone some of the money. And then to figure out, okay, Dave, with each of the departments, decide where is our priority? So we look to Dave to say, "Secure our system." Well, if he wasn't an honest person, he could blow everyone away by just saying, "Oh, we've got to spend this money to secure our systems." So it's a process of constantly saying, and is there an alternative? And what happens if that doesn't happen? And then with the departments of what they're doing, and that's why we'll go around again and saying something, for example, like, "Well, if we go to smartphones, yeah, there's not enough money to do everything." not enough money to do everything. If we go with smartphones, what does that mean to us? How does that show up in e-ticketing? How are they more efficient? How does that build morale? How do we get more revenue in? So it's those kinds of things. That's why there's a real, there's a need for us, on a pretty regular basis, but at least once a year, to come back to you, and it's not just in the budget process. So, that's one of the reasons why we're here. Then we'll do a last thing. Up there, you saw a bunch of them that said "completed," and yet it said, oh, we didn't spend everything that we needed, we didn't spend all the money, we didn't allocate it, so we didn't spend it on these. So one of the things that Dave did, and the rest of IT, is they solved some problems that, you know, to their credit, that we said, oh, if we would have put this much amount of money, that would have solved the problem. But when we didn't get that money, or all of it, Dave figured out something else. Now, that's not an indictment to say, oh, what we asked, it's to ingenuity, and we have to constantly be doing that. We'll take what money we have, we'll put it on the priorities of all these, and then he has to help explain to the rest of the staff, because that question about the plans come in, that comes constantly to Doug and the others. And if you go in Doug's office right now, or the people downstairs, you'll see these paper files that are just unbelievable. There's just piles of paper, you know, of big plans. And the sooner we can get from where we are now, to getting that, where they can look at the files electronically, we don't have the same kinds of issues with handling paper, they can be sent to multiple people, well, so where does that fit in? Well, Doug's got certain monies, that's basically like an enterprise fund. Oh, we can spend it on that. So Dave, you can access this, but he's got to be able to work with each one of the departments, so that they tell him, well, this is my project, or something like that. And then ultimately, it comes to you. But it has to come, so when you're at budget committees or other stuff, that as much as you can, from the level way up here, you ask hard questions, so you go, oh, I've heard somebody said, body cameras are a great idea. Well, hopefully, whatever, you ask those questions, too, like we do, so that you feel comfortable, and look at somebody and say, here's the pros and cons of body cam, here's the pros and cons of e-ticketing. So, that's part of the purpose of tonight.
Councilor McGinn. I have a great deal of respect for you, Dave, and with what you've been able to accomplish with significant budget shortfalls. I mean, it's almost unfair to ask this question, but if citizens would ask us, what grade would you give us, in terms of being able to accomplish what we need to do? You know, where are we? What grade would you give us in relationship to taking care of the need, realizing there's significant progress that needs to be made?
I actually think we're doing really well. You know, there's some things on the horizon, like, you know, talking about, we can only work with applications that were designed years ago, for so long. I, Joe and I regularly have risk management-based conversations, you know, like, I told them our Intranet site could go away tomorrow, and there's nothing I can do about it. But what's the risk to the enterprise? Is it going to hurt employees? Yeah, we've got a lot of data stored on there. We also end up, as Joe said, coming up with solutions. I wasn't going to implement the cloud alternative until, but then Truman had a real need for it, so I figured something out. It's not the way I wanted to do it, but we come up with ways to get things done. Finance couldn't spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on upgrading our financial application, so we figured something else out. So, we're really good at doing that. And we have to live within our means. One thing I will say is, IT is going to continue to grow. If you look at, you know, when we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on new software packages, when we put tablets in the hands of thirty, forty employees at a time, you know, you're increasing the devices and the applications that we support. And that's just the fact of life. We are in a time when we are, we're adopting a lot of technology at actually a feverish pace. There's things that didn't even make it on here, that they're not really part of the strategic plan, but we're adding things left and right, as far as new applications, new servers, new devices in our system.
Any further questions or comments for Dave? Thank you very much, appreciate it. And we have a report on the cultural district. Leah?
Leah Griffith, your library director, and it's not eleven o'clock. I thought I might be here at eleven o'clock when I saw where I was on the agenda. So...
Well, that doesn't give you license to go until...
I will not take that long. I'm a little old-school with the paper version, so you can follow along with that. This is the fourth or fifth year, I think, that I've been before you. So a lot of these things are things that you've heard before, except for your new council member, who is actually on the cultural district board, so I think we can go over a number of these things fairly quickly. Just a reminder, that the reason there is a cultural district is because of an intergovernmental agreement between the city and CPRD in 2013, that established the district, as well as the executive board to manage the activities of the outside area around there. The board is made up of the City of Newburgh representative, Matt Murray, the neighborhood representative, Robert Suppy, who's also the chair, the new cultural district director, Sean Andres, Don Clements, or Jim McMaster come from, represent Park and Recreation District, and then I represent the library, and I've been serving as secretary this year. We meet fairly regularly. The May meeting is actually tomorrow, because the budget committee meeting kind of took precedence of our normal first meeting of the month. Just as a reminder, the board is charged with the outside areas of the cultural district, and so that is the plaza in front of the cultural center, the Carnegie Court, and just basically anything that's outside of the buildings, of the library, of the cultural center. And even the playground, which is CPRD, it's still outside, so things that are going on in the playground still come before the cultural district board for design and approval and that type of thing. As a board, we develop rules of operations. Technically, we reserve events, but we have delegated that to the cultural center staff, because they need to coordinate everything. You can't have somebody else planning events for the outside, when they've got events going on on the inside. And as I said, we approve design elements, including street furniture, signage, those new, beautiful, big pots that are in front of the cultural center. Those were donated by the Early Bird Rotary, but Brian Stewart from CPRD brought the design and such to the board for our approval, because that is the process. The shade structure that's going in over by the splash pad, thank you, also came before our group for design approval. And the goal of that is that we connect the designs from CPRD-owned property to city-owned property. So we're not kind of going out and each one of us doing our own thing so much, we're trying to pull the look of the area together. So in 2017, we had a lot of events, Tunes on Tuesday, Lavender Festival, Camellia Festival, Public Works Day, summer reading programs all through the summer. In addition, we had the summer meal site for ten, eight weeks, a long time, and that was actually, other than the one at Edward School, was the largest meal site they had in an outside area, and so we actually are working with waste management for dumpsters this year, because they, it's a lot of garbage. And we're also setting up some volunteers to help with that program. And then, of course, the Christmas tree lighting. We met, you know, we're a board, we met, that's one of the things we do. We continued with the neighborhood parking signs for Tunes on Tuesday. That continues to be the event that causes most extreme concern and questions by the neighborhood. Because of the nature of Tunes on Tuesday, you come home from work and your whole neighborhood is filled with cars, and a lot of the people in that neighborhood do not have any off-street parking. Being an old, old neighborhood, there is, the house is there, and that's it, there is no place to park your car, other than on the street. And so, we have been doing this for three years, and every year, I put out a notice saying, if you want them, contact us. We've, I think, gained one person each year. Last year, we were up to nine, which really isn't that many, considering the size of the area. I noted it, excuse me, in the monthly newsletter this month, and I had one person who had been part of it last year email me already, saying she wanted signs for this year. I would anticipate that we'll have nine or so, again, asked for, and it's almost always the same group of people. We also installed peace poles in the area, the Early Bird Rotary with the splash pad. We did update the parking management plan, so that was good. And also had some discussion, oh, aren't you sweet, thank you, had some discussion with the new staff at CCC, because of course, we all, we know that Rob Daly left, and there was some miscommunication in terms of who was doing what, so we had to clean up and make sure that was really clear. They now have another new person managing the reservations, and so I think we'll probably talk with Sean, and maybe have a meeting with that person, to make sure that they totally understand how everything works, because Sean is still new. And the festival street designation is a lot of the issue, is how do we notify the neighbors when the street's going to be closed down, and all of that type of thing. The process really works well, and we just want to make sure that we're not missing any steps, because somebody's, you know, is new and doesn't know a piece of it. And I personally want to make sure that we get that really down tight, because I'm retiring next year, and I won't be there to have that memory, that, yeah, that memory. It's going anyway now, so. We also saw CPRD putting some initial signage, marking parking. We had that giant garbage art piece of Gertrude the Penguin for a while. We did apply for TLT funds for weigh finding, did not receive those, but it gave us a process. And then, we also spent some time reviewing our master plan with the board, the city, and CPRD, and so I think that was a good activity, to see what was really out there. We do have a website, we do the monthly newsletter every month, all of you should be getting And for 2018, we've got the events that we're doing. We're not really looking at adding more events, because one of the things we've found in the five years, is that if we have too many events outside, that limits the ability of the cultural center to have events inside. And the cultural center needs a certain amount of events on the inside to be able to operate and have enough funds to operate, and if the cultural center doesn't thrive, then that affects the cultural district. So it's a balance, and I think that we've got quite a nice lineup of outdoor events over the course of the summer, I don't think we really need to add more, because to be honest, it impacts the library with those parking areas being closed, the streets being closed, it impacts more neighbors with the streets being closed and parking in their neighborhood. So I think we've got kind of a nice balance of outside events that are working really well. One of the things we're going to be looking at in 2018 is reviewing the IGA. It's been five years, when the IGA was signed, we hadn't started yet, and so there may be some things with that IGA that need to be modified, and so again, we want to look at that, and kind of see what's going on with it. Looking at options for funding, for permanent signage to direct visitors to the area, and one of the places where we want to look at that funding is the CPRD Systems Development charges, which they've indicated are for cultural district activities. It does not cover anything inside the cultural center, but it talked about cultural center, cultural district items, and so there may be some funding that we can work through that, including maybe some parking in what is now the former Blue House on School Street. They came last week and knocked it down, and so it actually makes our neighbor Sherri Bowman's house look 100% better, and it just makes her house look beautiful without having that ugly old house next to it. So, it's really nice to have that done. The Early Bird Rotary shade structure, there's been some work on that, CPRD and the city are helping with that. I think the primary Rotary Rotarian, he's back from his month-long trip to Thailand, so hopefully, they'll get moving on that and get that started. There's some interest in some public art going in, so we'll be talking on that. We've got some work to do on the website, because I'll be honest, nobody really maintains it much, and there needs to be some things done to that. That's one of my work plan for retirement activities, is to make sure that happens. And then, always working with the neighbors, to make sure that we're really covering that. And of course, we have kind of, you know, we've got, Robert is the neighborhood representative, but then Matt also lives in the neighborhood, so we kind of have two neighborhood representatives. And that's the cultural district. Wow.
Questions or comments for Leah? Good concise report, thank you.
You are welcome.
And with that, we'll move to council business. Got a couple of items here. I just wanted to remind you, those that wanted to get to one of the local, or LOC, I'm sorry, LOC regional meetings, there has been one now scheduled for Sherwood. And that is on June 6th, which I believe is a Wednesday or a Thursday, one of the two.
It's a Wednesday.
And it's at 4:30 in the afternoon, and it's at the Police Department Community Room in Sherwood. That just showed up, so I thought there were those that wanted to, that previously wanted to attend, and...
Very useful.
Say again?
Very useful session.
Yeah. So that's on June 6th. And Patrick, you had a motion you wanted to put forward?
Councilor Begin, I wanted this motion to be made this evening, and so I am the poor slub that's going to do it. Like to make a motion that would allow staff to bring back information about the historical and current consequences to Newburgh residents of allowing water hardships.
Um, I'm sorry, could you repeat the motion more slowly? I just got the historic, historical part.
Oh, I have it right here, it's all highlighted.
Okay, you can just hand it to me, thanks.
Patrick, would you read that again, please?
So, basically, I was providing Sue a copy, sorry. Basically, the way I understand this is that she would like staff to bring back information, when they also bring back those code changes that we talked about last meeting. She'd like to have information about the historical and current consequences of allowing those hardships to take place. So when we approve a hardship, what happens? That's my understanding of what she's after. Just so we get some data.
Is this a clarifying motion?
Yes.
Or is this a motion that is superseding her previous motion?
That's a great question.
If I...
Superseding?
If I may, Mayor, Councilor.
Who's talking to me?
This is Community Development...
Oh, I couldn't see your light, thank you, go ahead.
I'm following the rules. This is really, it's a motion that supersedes the motion from your last meeting. So at your last meeting, you had tabled the discussion on the water hardship, and there was a motion to come back with code language. As staff has talked about that, we said, come back with code language exactly for what? And so what we'd like to do is come back on, at your second meeting in June, when it was supposed to come back, and go back, because we've got a PowerPoint from, we've talked about water hardships in the past, we need to update that, and we also want to come back with some additional information that shows kind of a chronology of, here's when we started this process, and these are some of the consequences that have occurred around the perimeter of the city, as that's been done, and new development has occurred, so that you have a better understanding before you ask us to go create some code language that we're not clear right now of what to do. what to do.
So it is, it is a motion that supersedes previously what we did. Counselor McKinnney?
Will that discussion involve the economic ramifications of where we were, where we are, the expenses, what is spent, what is gained, in terms of economics?
Could I follow that up with a clarifying question? I'm not sure what you mean by the economics. Are we talking about the revenue that may have been generated into the waterfront from having the hardships? Are we talking about having residential that's outside of the city and what economic impact that has on services or not? I need a little more clarity on what the parameters of that may be.
Well, there's always expenses involved, and then there was always the fees, the revenue that was generated from some of these things. It'd be nice to be able to compare that. I know that to win, a number of these people are probably paying, what, one and a half times the rate, you know, so on and so forth. But, you know, give us some type of economic, the ramifications of doing it, you know, based upon what the revenue that's received from doing it, or not received from doing it.
Was there a second to your motion, Patrick? Matt, okay, thank you. Do you agree with the additional language as a maker? Does your second agree?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion?
Call for questions.
The question has been called for. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. None? Hmm? Okay, thank you.
Was the only need, Corey? Okay, thanks.
All right. And with that, we have canceled the executive session, which I hope you got a notification of earlier. And with that, unless there's anything further that you want to bring before the council, I will entertain a...
Move leader.
...motion. We are adjourned. There is no debate.